Welcome, everyone. The regular meeting of the Board of Education of the San Francisco Unified School District for January 25th, 2022 is now called to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Alexander?
Here.
Commissioner Bogus?
Here.
Commissioner Collins?
Here.
Vice President Lamb?
Here.
Commissioner Maliga? Commissioner Sanchez?
Here.
President Lopez?
Here.
Student Delegate Lamb?
Here.
And Student Delegate Liang?
Here.
Thank you. Welcome to our second meeting of the month, the meeting before the Niners face the L.A. Rams. Hoping... I'm hoping...
President Lopez, I think we've won six in a row against the Rams, if I'm not mistaken.
That is correct.
We'll see. Well, okay.
That is accurate.
I know Superintendent Matthews will be able to share brief updates in his report, as has been happening in the all-staff briefings. Any new information regarding health and safety while learning will continue to be shared through the various district channels, including from commissioners. I want to be clear about this year's priorities. I know we continue to hold a lot, but especially important is the health and safety of our classroom, the district's budget, and our superintendent's reach. I also wanted to note how lengthy our meetings tend to be in our attempt to address the issues before us in an efficient and timely way. We'll continue to practice any processes that allow us to do our business, inform the public, and get you all more rest to continue to do this work. And we do hope to show our responsiveness to these pieces for all students, educators, and families. I'd like to remind us all that there are people behind all of this who have worked tirelessly to better support our students. If you haven't shown appreciation to someone within our school district walls or district offices, I encourage you to reach out. Item A: General Information. Item B: Our opening items. I'd like to start with our land acknowledgement. We, the San Francisco Board of Education, acknowledge that we are on the unceded ancestral homeland of the Ramata Shaloni, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. As the indigenous stewards of this land, and in accordance with their traditions, the Ramata Shaloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. As guests, we recognize that we benefit from living and working on their traditional homeland. We wish to pay our respects by acknowledging the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Ramata community, and by affirming their sovereign rights as first peoples. Item Two: Approval of Board Minutes. This is for the regular meeting of January 11th, 2022. I need a motion and a second. So moved? Second.
I said both, but I was making a mistake.
So I just need a second.
Second.
Commissioner, thank you. Roll call vote. Oh, sorry. Are there any corrections on the approval of board minutes? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Student Delegate Lamb? Yes. Student Delegate Liang?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Vice President Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Maliga? Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
And President Lopez?
Yes.
Six eyes.
Item Three: Superintendent's Report. I'd like to call on Superintendent Matthews.
Thank you, President Lopez. Good evening, everyone here and to our audience at home. Tonight, I want to start my remarks with a brief health and safety update. As of January 17th, the San Francisco Department of Public Health reported that the seven-day new COVID-19 cases per day average was 1,425 cases. This is a decrease from the 2,224 new cases per average on January 9th. So as predicted by experts, the surge is decreasing. The city's vaccination rate is at 82%. For 12- to 17-year-olds, it's at 90%. And for 5- to 11-year-olds, it's at 59%. Booster rates are now also being reported. To support students and staff having access to vaccinations and boosters, we're working with both the San Francisco Department of Public Health and the California Department of Public Health to stand up vaccination clinics at our school sites. This is another reminder and encouragement to get vaccinated if you're not already vaccinated. And if you've not been boosted, get your booster. And please get your children vaccinated if their five-years or older. Regarding testing, the San Francisco Unified School District has provided 18,633 color tests since January 3rd. January 3rd through 7th, there were 6,600 tests, and there was a 36-hour turnaround to get your results. January 10th through 17th is when we had the huge surge of tests, 7,215 tests with a 60-hour turnaround. January 18th through the 21st, there were 4,181 tests, and the turnaround number came down to 20 hours. And so far this week, there have been 573 tests, and there is an 11-hour turnaround to get your results. Also, Safer Together, one of our rapid antigen partners, administered 8,300 rapid antigen tests from January 2nd through today. As a reminder, self-swab kits for all students and staff are available for pickup at any school site, any mobile testing site, or any central office drop-off location. We've provided this service for over a year now. Self-swab kit samples will now be collected daily at each school site. Samples can be dropped off at any school site on the courier pickup route before 10:00 a.m. and at any of the mobile testing sites or any central office drop-off locations from 9:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. We've also provided each of our students with rapid antigen tests. Masking. We have increased our distribution of masks. Over 1.2 million masks have been delivered to schools and sites in the past two weeks alone. We have delivered KN95 masks, surgical and cloth masks to schools and departments. Did the self-swab kits? A message... That concludes the safe and healthy... Safety and Health Update. Now, a message from the Educational Placement Center. Everyone wishing to attend a different school next year, or if you're in a transition grade, you need to apply by February 4th, which is a week from Friday. You can apply online at sfusd.edu/apply or by calling 415-241-6085. Since this may be the safest way to apply with the highly contagious Omicron variant, our office is, of course, open from 8:00 to 5:00. And finally, please be informed that school sites will be closed on Monday, January 31st, 2022. This is a non-instructional day. And then, school sites will also be closed on Tuesday, February 1st, 2022, in observance of Lunar New Year. The most up-to-date academic calendar is available on sfusd.edu/calendars and is downloadable in PDF format in seven San Francisco Unified School District languages. President Lopez, as you can see on my tie, the 49ers will win. And now, I'd like to turn it back over to our president, President Lopez.
I didn't even notice that. Item Four: We will hear from our student delegates.
Thank you, President Lopez. Good afternoon, everyone. We want to start off by giving a quick recap of our Student Advisory Council meeting from last night. We're happy to say that the Student Advisory Council signed off on the Omicron letter that was sent to the superintendent a while back, and we are grateful for the updates that we got at the last committee of the whole meeting. We hope to continually be in contact with the superintendent's office. Next, we want to thank Dr. Veronica and Caroline from UCSF for coming in to speak about substance use and mental health. The SAC is hoping to help spread the word about their youth outpatient substance use program with schools.
Additionally, our Social Justice and Equity Committee is currently partnering with the Equity Office to continue working on the Title IX resolution. Lastly, we would like to remind everyone that the SAC is under a transition right now. Therefore, if you have any questions, please feel free to email judson@steelej1@sfusd.edu. Our next full SAC meeting will be on February 14th at 6:00 p.m., and it is open to the public. Thank you, President Lopez. That concludes our student delegate's report.
Great. Item Five: Recognitions and Resolutions of Commendation. There are none tonight. Item Six: Recognizing All Valuable Employees: Our Rave Awards. I will call on Superintendent Matthews again.
Thank you, President Lopez. This evening, we have a rave special service award, and this is being awarded to Celia Yu. She's a secretary at the Chinese Emergent School at Diavola. Presenting this award will be Wendy Chong, who is the principal at the Chinese Emergent School.
Good evening, everyone. I am Wendy Chong. I'm the principal from Chinese Emergent School. It is my honor tonight to celebrate and recognize our wonderful, wonderful ambassador of the school, Ms. Celia Yu, our secretary. Celia always welcomes our students and our families with a smile. She's positive every day. She has her full focus focusing on students, and she's truly the heart and soul of the school. So with that, we are so happy for you, Celia, for your recognition on this particular day. Thank you for your commitment and service to all of the students and support that you provide for all of the people at our school. Thank you, and we love you.
Ms. Yu, do you have any words you'd like to say?
Thank you for Wendy, and thank you for the SFUSD Board, you know, to recognize me. I'm so surprised I got nominated. I didn't expect that the parent will pay attention, but for little thing that I do, I'm so glad I can work for CIS and SFUSD. Thank you.
Thank you, Celia, for your work, and congratulations again. Section C is our public comment section. I will read the protocol for public comment. Please note that public comment is an opportunity for the board to hear from the community on matters within the board's jurisdiction. We ask that you refrain from using employee and student names. If you have a complaint about a district employee, you may submit it to the employee supervisor in accordance with district policy. As a reminder, board rules and California law do not allow us to respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during the public comment time. If appropriate, the superintendent will ask that staff follow up with speakers. First, we will hear from SFUSD students. Any SFUSD student who wishes to speak on any matter can do so now. And students may also speak at any other public comment time.
Thank you, President Lopez. So up to 15 minutes, one minute each? Great, thank you. So again, if you're a student, please raise your hand at this time. You can speak to any item. Can that be repeated in Chinese and Spanish, please?
Buenas tardes, por favor levante su mano si desea añadir un comentario público. Les recordamos que solamente este espacio es para los estudiantes. Gracias.
O sea, si hay algún problema, usted puede hacer el comentario en el tiempo de publicación.
Thank you. Ms. Marshall, do you have a student with you?
I'm so sorry, it was the wrong time, sorry.
No, no problem. I don't believe there are any students right now, President Lopez.
Okay. And just to remind you all, you have the ability to comment throughout tonight's agenda if you wish. Item Three: This will be for the general public. Any item that is not on tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Please raise your hand if you care to speak in general public comment to any item that is not on the agenda this evening. Could that be repeated in Spanish and Chinese, please?
Buenas tardes, por favor levante su mano si desea añadir un comentario público. Les recordamos que esto... Este espacio es solamente para aquellas personas... Comentarios que no están en la agenda. Gracias.
Ahora es el tercer momento de publicación. Entonces, cualquiera puede hacer el comentario en el tiempo de publicación.
Thank you. Seeing two hands? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Marshall.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Steele. Good afternoon, Steele. President Lopez, congratulations. Vice President Lamb. Board Commissioners. Dr. Matthews, Superintendent. Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls. I have some good news to share. On behalf of the San Francisco Lines of Black School Educators, we're honored to invite you to our African-American Honor Roll Celebration over three days via Zoom due to COVID. February 15th at 5:00 p.m., we'll celebrate all elementary scholars. On the 16th, our middle school scholars. On the 17th, our high school scholars. Well, we again, we honor more than 5,000 students of African-American descent who've earned a 3.0 GPA or higher. Yay! And we want to emphasize this time Lowell High School. Last year, you know, there were only 54 African-American students at Lowell. This year, there are more than 54 students who are on the Honor Roll. 12 have a 4.0. So thank you, principals and educators. You will call out the names of your scholars on that night. Parents, grandparents, and guardians. You will drape your child with their medallion. After 18 years, I'm pleased to pass upon to Haria Cheeks, a dynamic, lovely, quite capable educator who will chair the African-American Honor Roll going forward. Thank you so much, Habari Gani.
Thank you. Hello, Chris?
Hi, Judson, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Chris Boss, a sped teacher at Washington High School. This is going to be fast and thankfully simple. I just have some suggestions for running Zoom meetings. When there's public comment, it would be really cool if you had a timer. I know that would help me, and I haven't had the time to comment that prior to this, just because there's been so much other stuff to comment about. Thank you all for all of the work that you do. And we butt heads sometimes, but I really hope that you will all continue the excellent work you've been doing, you know? Thank you.
Thank you. President Lopez, that concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you for the announcements and the suggestions. Section D: Advisory Committee Reports and Appointments. Our first item, we will hear from the Migrant Education Program. I'd like to call on the MEP Representative Brenda Sandoval Moreno.
Hi, good afternoon, good evening, everyone. We have a student presenter on, and his name is Jose Espinoza on here. We did send over the presentation, and so if that could be presented to all of you tonight, that would be great. And just to confirm, our presentation this year is going to be in English, and we do have a video on Slide Number Two. Hopefully, that works for us today. Thank you. Go ahead, Jose.
Welcome all SFUSD community. Thank you for being here tonight. My name is Jose Espinoza. I am a 12th grade admission high school. I've been part of the migrant ed program since I was in elementary school. Now, I will let the migrant ed representative say.
Thank you, Jose. And like I said, I am part of the migrant education program. My name is Brenda Sandoval Moreno. I've been part of the program now going on four years. My responsibility and my main role for the program is supporting our high school students into post-secondary education throughout the school year. And so, we are really thrilled tonight to be here and have you all learn about our amazing program and families.
We would like to share this inspirational video with you all to show our story and how we value education.
Shop anything for your pet now at Petsmart and pay for it later with Afterpay.
Tells me, like, you always need to know where you come from to know where you're going. My name's Jocelyn Sanchez. I am a first-generation college student from Sac State, and I'm graduating with a BA in Psychology. My mom's from Guanajuato, Mexico. She just really motivates me to do everything I do in life. Growing up in Salinas, my mom was always working. She's been a field worker since, you know, she was pregnant with me. So I would go to, like, Head Start programs for, like, migrants. So I was always, like, in the school setting. So I feel like that made me really, like, love to learn. So I went back home to take my pictures. So I went back to Salinas, California. I just thought it was really important. My mom always tells me, like, you always need to know where you come from to know where you're going. I didn't think anything of it. Like, I was like, oh, that would be cool, you know? And like, me handing you something because it's for you, you know? Like, you did all that for us, so now I'm giving it back to you. I can't translate. She just said that she's really proud. She said that she didn't think, like, I would want to, like, let people know that this is my mom. Just because she knows that a lot of people, like, look down at people with these jobs. She did it for us, you know? So that we can have better opportunities. And that's why, like, I really want to dedicate this to her.
Through the work of Sarah Chavez and the migrant workers during the late 1960s, federal and state laws in California recognized the unique challenges migrant students faced and dedicated resources to support families. Our mission and purpose is to support with advocacy, academic enrichment, family development workshops, and transition into post-secondary education. We want all our students to be successful examples of our community.
Next slide, please.
The migrant education program eligibility consists of child and youth between the ages of 3 and 22 who have not graduated from high school. Child, parent, or guardian is a migrant agricultural worker who is in the fishing industry in the United States. Child or family moved within the past 36 months to obtain temporary or seasonal employment in agriculture or fishing and taking needs. Child has moved from one school district to another. The migrant education program focuses on meeting the needs of the students and families. We offer school readiness workshops, mentoring and monitoring academic progress, case management, college readiness workshops, as well as parent development workshops. Our focus is meeting our families with a need for support. This year, we have also expanded our mental health support. Other services provided by the migrant education program consists of mental health workshops. Parent support in the core of the program lies within identifying families and recruiting. Due to COVID-19 and all its variants, our migrant ed families have been impacted mentally, emotionally, and financially. MEP has increased the level of support due to hardships faced by our families. The amount of emergency reports and shelters, group entries, testing sites increase and continues. Our families are suffering from homelessness, evictions, and job loss. We have connected with CBOs around our community to collaborate and support our families. Our families' needs are more than ever. Despite all the hardships our families face, we want to share some of our highlights. MEP Summer School had a aquaponics program in which our schools, our students thrive and learn about the type of fish farming that uses a waste product by fish to supply nutrients to hydroponic plants or plants grown without the use of soil. We also launched our high school internship program where students shared stories with their youth and supported in the classroom. Our continued success story is that we have 100% rate of graduating seniors. We expand funding for recruitment and the support of the family therapist to address trauma and crisis faced by our families. MEP faces several challenges. Our families lack language interpretation, homelessness, poverty, immigration issues, and lack of access to resources. 80% of our families have had evictions and total job loss. Our families also have a high risk of contracting COVID-19 as they are frontline workers. Our priority includes making sure that the level of support for all families continues to meet all their needs. Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to listen and learn about our families and our stories. Once again, my name is Jose Espinoza, and I am the migrant education program. Have a great night.
Thank you, Jose, for presenting. And at this moment, if you, if it's okay with President Lopez, would I be able to take questions if there are any?
Yes.
Wrong mic, sorry. So you will have that opportunity. Before we do that, I'll open it up to public comment, and then we can begin our discussions.
Great, thank you.
Great. Please raise your hand if you care to speak to the migrant ed program presentation. Can that be repeated in Spanish and Chinese, please?
Buenas tardes, por favor levante su mano si desea añadir un comentario con relación al programa migrante de educación. Gracias.
Hello, if you have any comments on the migration work you can make a statement.
Thank you. Seeing three hands, President Lopez. One minute. One minute each. Ms. Marshall, you can go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Steele. To my former colleagues in A and E, migrant education especially, thank you so much for another very informative, great presentation to the young lady. We know that you're already a great teacher, and you'll be excellent in the field. I am a farmer's daughter, growing up in a farm in Tennessee, in which we still have the family farm. So I'm really partial to farm workers and helping farm workers' children. Caesar Chavez is one of my heroes. So thank you. In this city of plenty, there are still children who are working in the fields and going from farm to farm in season to season. So I'm... migrant education has a special place in my heart. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hello, Alita.
Hello, everyone. On behalf of the Community Advisory Committee for Special Education, I would very much like to thank Ms. Brenda Sandoval Moreno and the student who spoke with her tonight. Thank you so much. Takes a whole lot of courage to get up and speak in front of this many people. So kudos, kudos, kudos. The CAC would also like to just echo and call everyone's attention to the challenges and priorities on Slide 10. Particularly, the challenge of the lack of interpretation, cultural humility, and empathy at school sites. As Danielle Utley, who is the liaison to the D-LAC, has very often said, "It's necessary for us to move from compliance to commitment." Not just checking the boxes, doing the things we need to do legally, but really doing them because we value our families. We see the overlap in IEP meetings and the need for not just... We see the, we see the overlap in, in IEP meetings and the need for not just interpretation, but the understanding of the technical issues and how to move past the words and into actually actions that get the supports for families they need. So thank you. We look forward to collaborating further through the Joint Advisory Committee, Joint Advisory Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Michelle.
Yes, thank you, Judson. Good evening, everyone. This is Michelle Jaco Manegas, the coordinator for the Parent Advisory Council to the San Francisco Board of Ed. And I want to basically echo everything that Alita Fisher just said, as well as appreciate Ms. Ms. Marshall's comments. As the coordinator for the PAC and a convener of the Joint Advisory Committees for the District, I've had the pleasure and honor to work alongside Brenda, Brenda Moreno Sandoval and am so appreciative of all of her efforts and always being such a strong advocate for the migrant students and migrant families. Appreciate the students that we heard from this evening, both in person, as it were, and on video. And just want to echo Lee's request that we, that as a district, we really hear what, what the asks are and what the needs are and figure out ways to solve these challenges and move, as Danielle says, beyond compliance. So thank you again so much.
Thank you. President Lopez, that concludes the public comment on this item.
Okay, let me see if there are any questions or comments from our student delegates or commissioners regarding tonight's presentation. Let me check. Commissioner Sanchez. Commissioner Alexander.
Yeah, thank you very much to the staff and student and others who, who prepared this report. I'm curious if you could speak to the extent to which you've received support from the district around meeting some of the challenges. I know we've made some efforts, for example, around that COVID rent relief. I had worked with Deputy Superintendent Blythe and others to get information about that out. But I'm just curious how your, how your families have perceived that in terms of the success or not, or lack thereof of our efforts to really support immigrant families and migrant families that we know are suffering, have suffered so much, in particular, in the, in the last year and a half.
Thank you for the question. As you know, and as you've read on this PowerPoint, our families have suffered total and complete job loss, homelessness, poverty, you name it, they're suffering it. And so the families that we work with are aware that these programs, excuse the dogs back in the background, but they are aware that these programs exist, but they fear support. And so they fear going there could be detrimental to their legal status. And so what we've been working on is eliminating that fear and eliminating the fear that they have going to ask for help. And that, that within itself is a huge load of work and encouraging them. Some of our families have received support from the district and they have told us and we've, we've walked them through the process. There's a lot of handholding, but I think that there is still a lot of work left to do in the fact that we need to really put these programs out there for our families to know and make them, and reassure them that these programs are safe and that they will not be, their information is not going to be seeped out to other immigration resources or any other, other agencies. That is one of the biggest things that we, we've seen with our community is that there is support, but we really need to put a bigger effort in, in letting our families know that there, there are these amazing supports within the district. Because we've done a lot of connections outside of the district with CBOs, which have been really beneficial, but we would love to continue the collaboration within the in-house resources.
Commissioner Bogus, before you go, I just wanted a follow-up and I'm curious if there's a way to connect with individual school sites, particularly teachers who work with our families and who tend to have a deeper trust with them. Is there any information that we can give educators in case someone's asking or a way to kind of get them to the, to your hands?
Yes, so we have in, we have set out flyers and we have really connected with the parent liaisons at the schools where we sent out not only our physical flyers, but we sent out our online link, which we have an online link on SFUSD and to the migrant education program. Families are able to switch the language from English to Spanish. We also have our online questionnaire there. So if any teacher, parent liaison, secretary, because the secretaries are so crucial, they're the first folks that they see when they walk into the school. If they're aware of our program and if they know that the family may qualify, please refer to that website or give us a call. We are located at Mission High School, Room 101, myself and my counterparts, Blanca Gonzalez and Gina Padilla. And so we'll be more than happy to contact the families for support. We, I really do want to mention that our program is not associated with any sort of immigration agencies. There's a lot of misconception that it may have a connection and there is not. And also, asking the right questions is important because some of our families not only have fear, but are embarrassed that they have, that they do this work and oftentimes may go unseen and unsupported because we aren't asking the right questions. And so I think that's really important to bring forth to all of you and to our communities.
Thank you. Commissioner Bogus?
Thank you so much for that. I, I guess I, I just, I guess I have a question for the superintendent in, in response to the challenges that are being posed. Just seeing the, the consistency in the challenges, should we as a board just kind of expect that because of circumstances outside of our control that we're just going to always have these things as issues? Or are they actually things that we realistically are going to be addressing kind of in a, in a relatively short timeframe for the, for the groups who are kind of bringing these concerns to us?
Thank you for that question. I think that, you know, one of the things that we want to do as a district is consistently do everything we can. So I don't want to, what I, what I do want to say is I don't, what I don't want to say is that, no, we should always expect these issues to remain or issues to continue to persist. But as you said, they are continual. I think that, for example, as you know, as we all know, in the last two years, there's been, you know, a huge issue that we've all, as a community, have been contending with. But I think one of the things that we as a district have continually tried to do is is address as many problems as we can, as many problems as we can wrap our hands around. And so, and unfortunately, there are some things that we can't. But, but as a district, we try to do the best we can and we'll continue to try to do that.
Is there any way that as we kind of get these recommendations and concerns from advisory groups that we were able to kind of track or monitor progress? Like, is the lack of language interpretation and cultural humility the same this year as it was last year when they brought it up? Or has there been progress made some, somewhere? I guess, like, how do we, how do we show that and how do we kind of be in conversation? I, I guess I feel like as someone who's receiving this report, I'm not really equipped to kind of do much with it, but like look at how many things haven't changed and not know if that is actually entirely true. I know there's a lot of work being done, but like, how do we, how do we demonstrate that, show that to the community and give realistic expectations?
Yeah, I would say that staff who are assigned and work with them would have a better grasp on whether there is some change. I, I can't tell from this. I know for many of the groups that either I'm working with firsthand or have much more knowledge. I could say that we could see that type of growth, but I would say that staff who's working directly with them would have a much better grasp on whether there is growth in those areas or not.
I appreciate that. I guess maybe for the board, I would, I'd ask board leadership if maybe we would ask the, the different advisory committees and bodies to come back maybe in the middle of the year, rather than giving like a full-fledged report just to kind of talk about their challenges and progress that's been made on them, just so that we can kind of gauge a little bit more in addition to kind of our annual report back for them. And then I had some additional questions related to the data that was shared. I don't know who's the best person to respond, but do we have access to the, the graduation rate for the most recent year? I saw that we had for the, for the year nineteen twenty, and I was wondering if we had it for... Okay, I was just wondering if we could share that and if we could also share the CSU UC requirement net percentage?
So eleven out of thirteen migrant ed students graduated in this latest release of the 2021 data. And the year before that, it was eleven out of fifteen.
Okay.
And then if you want me to give you the UCCSU, is that what you wanted?
Yeah, I would love if those, those piece of information could be shared together. It feels for me like they're really tied together.
Yeah, I could give you all those percentages. It was five out of fifteen with the UCCSU requirements in nineteen twenty.
Okay, thank you.
This is all from the state's website.
Okay, thank you for that. I will, I will pull that data up from a data quest as well. I, I guess I'm curious of like, since it's such a small number of students every year, what, what would it take for us to, to, to get and to maintain a hundred percent of a graduation rate for these students?
So when we say a hundred percent is, so some of those students that, that are being mentioned, they became our OSY students, which are out of school youth. So what we did is we continued their post-secondary education through vocational schooling. And so they were able to graduate at that moment, at that point. It is such a small section of students, but because it is such a small section of students, they often go unseen. And so they often go unseen because the trajectory and the history with our students and our families, if you don't speak, you don't get in trouble, you don't get seen. So it's that repertoire, right? So we really are encouraging our students to speak up, voice up, and that's why tonight it was very important for us to have a student leader amongst our community, amongst his peers, come forth and present to you all and show his face and show his, share his story. Because truly, the migrant ed program is not me or Blanca or Gina. It's our families, it's our students, it's Jose, right? So that's what we wanted to show tonight. And I would love for you to sit down with our team and we can start work, maybe working on future collaborations and sharing more in-depth, in-depth our, our data. Because we do have an internal data that we monitor and it might not reflect on what was just presented. So we have a, a data that's internal and that reflects the actual numbers and percentages.
No, I appreciate that clarity and I would love to, to find a time to meet. I think I'm just really interested in what additional staffing support or other resources are needed to just maintain such like a high level of success, just kind of knowing the needs of the community, understanding that we need additional support and kind of outreach and getting people identified. But I, I also just, just want to make sure that if, if, if we're able to, to get close to a hundred percent graduation rate, that we're able to kind of maintain that and identify kind of the staffing and the needs to do that. And so I definitely will, will follow up with you and maybe that's something we can kind of talk more about and strategize, how the board can be supportive of that in our budgeting processes as the superintendent and staff implement things. I think those were my questions. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you so much. I appreciate your questions.
And I believe you have, there might be two more. Vice President Lam?
Thank you. Thank you to the staff and to our student for your presentation tonight. I had a couple of clarifying questions. I know that one of the recommendations in previous years was the importance around the enrollment and recruitment of, of students into the program. And it sounds like with EPC, that was something that we had wanted to ensure that that was in the enrollment. Has that been now woven into that approach?
We have met with several EPC team members and leads throughout the school year in order to work with them and figure out the best case scenarios for us to have them, because they are the first person, people that they, that our families encounter, it is really crucial for them to know about our program and know our qualifications for them to, for them to qualify for the migrant ed program. And so we have been working very closely with them since the beginning of this year, especially through COVID, because everything was transferred over to online, which was very hard for our families. Some of our families, like we've mentioned, lost their jobs, losing their jobs, their homes. They have no access to internet. They have no phones. So when that transition happened to online, our families lost total complete communication. And so we have been working closely with EPC in regards to kind of figuring out a way to, to bridge that gap. I will say that it is a work in progress, but I think that there is a huge amount of work that still needs to be done in order to kind, to support our, all of our SFUSD families.
Thank you for that update. And certainly I think we agreed in, you know, as the board had communicated that the EPC, as you said, is such a crucial kind of first often interface to the district. This is really weedy in, in the details, but I'm curious, as far as eligibility for the program starts at age three. So how is, has a program or does the program have been working with city resources, such as the Family Resource Centers throughout the, the city of San Francisco?
So within this, so within the city, so based on, so each case is, each family is case by case because their needs are range, right? But we have been working closely with La Raza Instituto Familiar. And I should also mention that most of our community for the migrant ed program is in the Mission area and Bayview, and so they're kind of scattered within the, the projects and the most impacted communities within San Francisco. So we, we've established throughout the years these connections, but the resource line has been really helpful for our families. However, because of the high level of need, it has, it has shown our families have not been as successful in reaching and getting that support because the wait is long. And unfortunately, because of their job, they have like a thirty-minute lunch and that's the moment they use to call and they're often not successful. So another thing that we, we want to put forward is maybe having more people available or late hours or other sort of resources that our families can reach, because it has been very difficult to get through.
Thank you. It's just as a follow-up, then, I really encourage with the team, because there's a built-out infrastructure for citywide funded Family Resource Centers, there's twenty-six of them, and they are also anchor organizations in the neighborhoods I were mentioning. I'd be happy to do any introductions if the team hasn't already been working in collaboration, but I just think they're, they have case managers there and certainly I know that they are also feeling the stressors of COVID, but that is why they exist and they're funded by the city. So, and we're one city, so wanting to be able to provide those resources as possible in that continuum. Either you have a child that is three years old to a child that is graduating high school with SFU certified. So however I can be a resource, please let me know as well. Again, I apologize to colleagues super in the weeds, but just wanted to offer that up.
Great, thank you so much.
Okay, and any last comments for this discussion? Commissioner Collins?
Thank you. I wanted to piggyback on Commissioner Bogus's question around tracking. And it's a question that I've brought up several times in regards to the updates that we get from our different advisory groups. I've repeatedly been asking the superintendent for when there's recommendations or challenges listed in reports, if there's a way for us to track them year to year. And, and I'm just wondering when we'll be able to see something like that, because it would be something that you're asking for, right? And, and some of the things we may not be able to provide or, you know, we're working on them in the future. But I've consistently asked for, and this is for all advisory committees, for us to be able to have some common mechanism for tracking progress and showing, I know we do actually respond to requests, but showing that and then also making that public facing on the website.
So yes, that we do track from the committees and we track the responses. And they are, they are, the track and the progress is tracked. I know that is, that is done. So we have been doing that and if board members, I know the second part is the public facing, that has not been done.
I'm just, I'm, I'm kind of surprised because I didn't know that you were tracking it and I've been asking for several years. And so I think the, the issue is it's not just important to me personally, but I think we shouldn't have to ask for that multiple times. And I think ultimately it's the public that really wants to know. And I, I do know that we're a very responsive district, but sometimes it's not very visible to the public and for them to see the connections between a request for something and what that actually looks like in practice might not, you know, they might not make that direct connection. So I would like to make the request again that, however you track that, that that be shared with all of us. And it should at least be, it should be in the board docs, I think, as a part of, you know, I think as a document. It doesn't necessarily... It doesn't necessarily have to be, uh, I think it could be a report or just a one-page document. That would be really helpful in the board docs presentation. So the public, if, because sometimes the public only shows up for a meeting that's about a community that might, you know, they might be doing a report. So they can show up and they could see it there. And then it would also be great if that, that document could also live on the page that we have associated with um that committee on the website.
I'll work with the Chief of, Chief of Staff to make sure that during these presentations that, that uh tracking of the previous, usually it's the previous three or four years, those recommendations and the progress that's being made, what's done and what's not done.
I really appreciate that because I also want to recognize staff. I know we are very responsive and sometimes unless you've been tracking one item over a period of years, you, it's harder sometimes to see progress. And I do think that there's a lot that has changed in this district over the last, you know, five to ten years, based on input from our advisory committees and the staff that's working. So I wanted to also say thank you to the parents and families, caregivers and staff working to support um the migrant ed community. Um, and I'm just really grateful for your um, your involvement in our district and helping us to improve services. Thank you.
Okay, I, I really want to appreciate you, Brenda and Jose for your presentation. And I will also be supporting any efforts to track and measure and, and connect you with other commissioners who'd like to follow up.
Great. Thank you again for all of your questions. And we would love to sit down and have conversations and collaborate and figure out how we can bridge the gap and really support all of our SFUSD families. Thank you so much.
Okay, still under section D, are there any advisory committee appointments from commissioners? And uh I might need an update, Judson, just to share publicly if there are any positions that need appointments um to share with commissioners.
Yeah, I don't have it off the top of my head, but I can share via email after this.
Okay, thank you. For next time. Section E, consent calendar. I need a motion and a second on the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Can we hear, or sorry, can we see if there are any public comments for this item for the consent calendar?
Yes. Please raise your hand if you care to speak to any of the items that are in the consent calendar. And can that be read or can that be said in Spanish and Chinese, please?
Buenos Aires, por favor levante su mano si desea ir un comentario público con relación al calendario. Gracias.
Thank you. Seeing none, President Lopez.
Okay, thank you. Any items withdrawn or corrected by the superintendent?
No, President Lopez.
Any items removed for first reading by the board? Seeing none. Any items severed by the board or superintendent for discussion or vote tonight?
I would like to um pull item number twenty, memorandum of understanding authorization um around the MOU with Safer Together.
Okay, Ms. Lenov, can you repeat items severed?
Item number twenty, the MOU between us and Safer Together, is that correct? Has been severed, right?
Yes, and then we will vote on the rest of the consent calendar. Roll call, please.
Student Delegate Lam?
Yes.
Student Delegate Liang?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Vice President Lam?
Yes.
Commissioner Maliga?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
And President Lopez?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Section F, discussion and vote on consent calendar items severed for separate consideration. As we just heard, it's item twenty, MOU authorizing uh an MOU with Safer Together. And we've already opened it up to public comment on this item. So we can have a discussion. I do want to allow ten minutes for clarifying questions and then we will vote.
So I guess the, the reason that I pulled this is because I wanted to know more about this organization. As a parent, I've been very interested in making sure that testing is easy and accessible. And it sounds like this is an organization that will help to allow us to do that. One of my concerns, though, in registering for it was as a parent, when I was going through the registration process, there was um, you have to sign, you know, click different boxes. And one of the boxes said that as parents, we are required to give up um considerable rights in order to access the service online. And that was really concerning for me, being that I've, I've done um a lot of testing with UCSF, things like that. And I'm not familiar with this organization. And I'm also not consider, it, it's, I mean, it says in really, it, it's like a section that's just in big bold black letters. It says, you need to, you know, I understand that I am giving up considerable rights in order to access this service. And so I, I don't feel at that, I didn't feel comfortable doing that as a parent. And then I, I also was concerned with questions that were even, or comments that were made with the migrant ed. You know, there are families that are very concerned about, you know, their um data. They're very concerned about um dealing, you know, interactions with um the government and things like that. And um I was also concerned that these kinds of um agreements might dissuade um immigrant families from participating in programs. So I wanted to know more about the legal um aspects of the agreements that you're asking parents to sign.
So uh, I'll start with the first part. And then uh Chief Laugh Smith, if you want to talk about the agreement or what parents are asked to check. Uh, we partnered with Safer Together. The, this is an organization that has been able to get rapid testing, uh, get, actually get test, rapid test uh from the state. This is something that, as you, we all know, it's very difficult at this time to get these tests. So they're able to get these tests. Uh, they actually are performing the test. We've had them here for the last uh three weeks now. Uh, we have run a number of uh sites, uh at a number of school sites, including we've had day-long uh testing sites in our parking lot. Uh, this group has been um, it, it's of no cost to the district. And uh they've come down, they actually raised their funds, it's private, privately funded, they raised their funds. And then they have been able to come down and uh, you know, in my, in my view, meet a need uh uh that has been a need in this community. It's quite clear it's a need uh because the line, for example, I've worked at three of the four days that they've been here uh at five 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 Franklin. And the line stretches from our parking lot all the way down almost to Golf Street. And that line stays steady from nine o'clock to four o'clock. So this is a need that's being met, that's at no cost to the district uh for rapid testing to the community. And one of the things you, you said is that uh you were, you were concerned that it's dissuading many immigrant families. But in many of the immigrant families, many of the people in line are exactly that, immigrant families who are in line to get tests, these tests. Um, Ms. Laugh Smith, did you want to talk about, more about the, the forms or, or why uh the forms that are, that are listed there for parents to uh the boxes that they have to check?
Sure.
Excuse me, I just want to be real specific about what we're referring to, if it's okay. I'll read that so that then when um Ms. Laugh Smith is.
I think it, I think it'll be helpful if it's a clear question and then.
Yeah, I have a very specific, this is what's on the actual thing that we're supposed to sign off on. And I would love to have staff tell me what they, what, what is meant by the so, the legal form that I'm signing off as a parent in order to participate.
So you'll briefly read it and then staff can respond too?
Yes. It says, if I am consenting for myself by signing below, I acknowledge that I have read and fully understand all of the terms of this release and that I am voluntarily giving up substantial, substantial legal rights in exchange for participating in testing. If I am consenting on behalf of a test participant by signing below as the parent, legal guardian, conservator, or healthcare proxy of the test participant, I acknowledge I have fully read and understand the terms of this release. And that I am voluntarily giving up substantial legal rights on behalf of the test participant, to the extent permitted by law, in exchange for the test participant participating in the testing. And so as a parent, I don't know what substantial legal rights I'm giving up. And um, and I don't know how, as somebody who's not a legal expert, I can understand how I can say that I fully understand the rights that I'm voluntarily giving up.
Okay, I, I'd like staff to respond. And then Commissioner Bogus, I think you also have a question or comment.
Um, thank you for the questions, Commissioner Collins. Um, and I'm sorry that I didn't know these beforehand to get you all of the answers from them. So I will explain what I know about the program, but I'm not going to be able to provide the information on exactly what those questions mean. Um, and exactly what it means to be giving what you just, what you just said. So I will do my best to get that information. Um, the, what I understand is that the Safer Together is part of the California Department of Public Health Testing Task Force. And it was something um many different other agencies and school districts are part of it. And through that, you become a certified laboratory lab to be able to um administer the, the, the rapid test. These are, I think, what are called professional grade that have to, that are administered. When they come in packs of forty, they have to be um administered or proctored. Uh, many school districts are part of this program. To be part of the program, um you use the primary platform. That's the platform from California Department of Public Health to register and to report the results that go in it. What I'm not one hundred percent sure is if that language is California Department of Public Health language on the platform or Safer Together's. I'm trying to get that clarification and I will get that information to you um when I get it.
So can anyone tell me what substantial legal rights parents are being asked to voluntarily um give up?
Well, Commissioner, as Chief Laugh Smith just shared, this is the first we're hearing of this question. Um, I think to answer your question, we would need to read the waiver language below. Um, as I took down notes of what you said, again, for the first time I'm hearing this. Uh, if you read and understand all of the terms of the release, we would need to see the terms of that release. Um, and we would need to discuss that with the HIPAA expert. So I don't think we can give you an answer to that tonight, but we can certainly uh respond.
Okay, Commissioner Bogus, yeah. And then um we'll have to rub this up.
I'll try to keep brief. I, I would just say, I would love to, to kind of figure out the appropriate place for the follow-up conversation, if that's a committee, to kind of have a further conversation. Uh, I think I'm also interested about the um, the, the translation of those agreements and whether or not there's anything that we can do for any of the kind of online services that we use that kind of hit people with huge terms of services to just make it really simple and plain so people understand what they're committing to without having to pretend to read something that they may not. Um, I, one thing I'm curious about is the terms of the agreement. I see in the agenda, it's listed through twenty twenty-four, but then on the actual thing that is attached, it says twenty twenty-two. And I guess I was just trying to get clarity on what is our commitment to providing this testing through what length of term?
Thank you, Commissioner Bogus, for the question. So typically our MOUs are through three-year periods. These are the standard MOU formats. Um, but we wanted to keep it to twenty, the end of this year, June twenty twenty-two, and then we'll reconsider whether we continue it. So apologize that that's a little bit confusing.
So then what is on the attachment is correct, but what is listed kind of with the agenda item is not correct? Is that right?
It's because the, our MOUs are sort of on a standard template and most of them are three years. So we just didn't catch that this one should have been the twenty twenty-two.
No, I just wanted you to just say that again, just to clarify. I appreciate that. And so, and so is that a reflection then of our commitment to providing testing? Or is that just a commitment of like the length that we want to go into this agreement and then kind of reassess this vendor and this contract?
Yeah, it absolutely is not um a reflection of our commitment to testing. We, we are continuing to consider and plan and think about what is testing going to look like as the pandemic continues to run its course, um whatever next phase is. Uh, we will be releasing another request for proposals, hopefully this spring with everything that we've learned. I did want to stop and say, you know, we, it hasn't even been a year yet since we started offering testing as a school district. And things have changed so much and we have learned so much. So we are currently working on the request for proposal and the um intent award, which the board approved, I think, last February twenty twenty-one um for the color contract. And that is what we are providing testing through. Um, considering that we may be um providing testing um into next school year, we are looking at the RFP and sort of from everything we've learned, sort of rethinking what might be some of our testing strategies um as we think what it might look like in the next school year. So the twenty twenty-two is only our commitment to work with Safer Together to provide the rapid antigen sites as we get through the school year. It is not um our commitment for any other testing services.
Is it possible for us to get this information before we vote on it? Because I do really, I'm, I'm very happy that we're moving forward on getting rapid testing available. And at the same time, I'm also concerned about just answering these questions. Um, and I'm bringing this up because I also know, I'm talking to experts um that have expertise in data. And um there's a lot of companies now that are taking advantage of um student testing as well as um online software. And I think in some ways, um districts are not exercising their um, their role um in making sure that we're negotiating contracts that don't violate or um, I would, I wouldn't necessarily say violate, but make sure that, that the ways that student data are being used. And there are some very concerning um trends in the ways that um student data, this is even just with educational software, but also now via, I've heard this in addition with color, which I've used, you know, with, with my students. But I just want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence because this is a whole new area that's opening up. And I think there's not enough questioning about how we're allowing um outside private entities to use student data. Um, and I mean, this is an, this is a larger conversation even nationally, but it's our job as, as a school board to protect students and their data. And there are a lot of companies that are offering free services and they seem like they're free. But what they are actually um getting from a relationship with us is access to student data, which then they monetize in different ways. And so I just want to encourage us as a board to just, I, I'm not knowledgeable enough. And this, you know, I, I'm very glad, as I said, that we're trying to find partnerships to meet our needs to test students. But I just want to make sure that we're asking questions and not engaging in relationships without um being really clear about what that means. What are the implications for um the students that we serve?
Thank you. May I add, thank you, Commissioner Collins. May I add um that the reason we have the MOU, and we will look for the information about the language, but I wanted to be really clear that our MOUs and, and our contracts have standard language that data is not allowed to be shared. So in this particular instance, um, the, the, the Safer Together or any other group, even Color, they cannot share any data that they collect through a, a contract or an MOU with us.
Okay. I have information that counters what you're saying. And we're, I'm signing up with Safer Together, not with SFUSD. And I think that's my understanding is that I'm, in order to get this testing, that I'm actually kind of engaging in a contract with an outside agency, you know, that is being kind of referred to me through SFUSD, so.
Um, well, I think, well, we have heard enough discussion on this item. I'm gonna go ahead and do a roll call vote. And then um, yeah, I, I believe we've heard enough from commissioners and staff.
Item number tw- uh twenty.
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, Student Delegate Lam?
Yes.
Student Delegate Liang?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
No.
Commissioner, uh, Vice President Lam?
Yes.
Commissioner Maliga?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
President Lopez.
Yes.
Success.
Okay. Item G, Discussion of Other Educational Issues. Tonight, we'll hear a report from Hazard, Young, Ateya on desired characteristics of the next superintendent, and we will have a board discussion. I also want to note, our vote won't take place tonight. It will happen during a special meeting this Thursday, also at 5:00 PM. I'd like to call on Hank Camitro from Hazard, Young, Ateya, and Associates.
President Lopez, I don't see him on yet. Let me contact him. Maybe if you wanted to move to the next item, I could circle back with this one. Glenn is on? Okay, great.
Good evening. I'm here. Judson, can you tell me whether either of my colleagues are on?
Glenn, I see you, Glenn. I do not see Hank. I'm sorry? Martha?
Okay. Okay. Let me grab another part of my report. I had the part that I was going to do, but I need to get the rest then, once.
It might be best to go ahead and move forward with another item and then let us come on right after. Because we were expecting to come on at 6:30 at the earliest. So I think we should do it for Hank.
Okay.
This is a really important report, and we want to make sure that he introduces the report, and then we'll each take our section. So thank you, President Lopez.
I am here.
Oh!
Sorry.
No worries. We started earlier than expected.
That's quite all right. There you go. Are we ready to start?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so we sent you the report on Monday for your review. And you have the executive summary, which is what we're going to review today, along with the survey results from the online survey. And then we'll discuss the desired characteristics more thoroughly next, this coming Thursday on the 27th. So first of all, a huge thank you to everyone on the San Francisco Unified Staff who helped us with the organization and communication around the community engagement meetings. People did a yeoman's job of getting information out. And particularly during a time of the COVID surge, when things were originally organized and then had to be reorganized multiple times. So Judson and his team really did a great job of trying to keep on top of all of that as people needed to change their schedules, either because they were becoming ill or because they had to cover classrooms or other responsibilities as other people were becoming ill. So we did have a chance to talk to about 250 people. And a little 1,968 or 64 people completed the online survey. So the results that we compiled is based on the responses of some 2,200 parents, community members, staff members, and students on the online survey. None of the students chose to participate in the in-person meetings. And you have a breakdown on the page two of the report of the number of people that we talked to during Zoom meetings in each one of those groups and how many people responded to the online survey. So we basically have three sections we want to cover today. One is talking about the strengths of the school district. The second one is talking about the challenges that the school district is facing. And then the third one is what the community members are saying are the most important desired characteristics in the next superintendent. So Glenn is going to start with talking about the strengths.
Thank you, Hank. Let me begin by saying that with each individual and group that I met with, I heard a great deal of passion for the school district. The people really love your school district and want to see it do well. And the things that they brought to us, I really believe, came from their hearts. So in the area of strengths, there were five major areas that we noted. They are a commitment to social justice, which included a tremendous amount of pride for the focus the district places on social justice and equity. The fact that the district looks through the equity lens when they look at problems and issues. And when they encounter institutional racism, they call it out and they see it as they see it in policies and practices. So they're addressing the issues that they see. The second major item is the quality and commitment of administrative, teaching, and support staff at the building level. Parents and other community members and the staff all mentioned the dedication, commitment, and quality of work at each site in the district. They spoke highly of the staff members and credited them for the successes in student learning, the improvement in graduation rates, and the culture of caring and support at many of the schools. The staff also recognized the commitment of their peers as they faced the increasing demands of the COVID pandemic. So in essence, they're saying that they were helping each other to get through this. The third major area is the wealth of resources in San Francisco. I personally heard this from groups such as those organizations that are providing services on campuses, some that would like to be serving, providing services. I heard it from county supervisors. I heard it from parents. There is so much available. There are so many good things that are being done by your community-based organizations and charitable programs and organizations. And many of those that we interviewed stated that while the district has made significant efforts in these partnerships, there is much more available, and existing could be deepened through improved collaborative efforts. The fourth major area, community, schools, and wellness centers. There's widespread appreciation and support for the community schools approach. The community-based organizations, parents, staff, and administrators all encouraged the district to continue these and expand them if possible. These centers are also addressing mental health issues, nutritional and physical health needs, and other aspects of the quality of community life. And I'm sorry, and the community has benefited in a major way from these efforts. There's broad support to see that community schools are expanded. The fourth major area, many excellent programs and options. This is talking about some of the curriculum programs, some of the support programs within the district. The innovative ethnic studies program for which San Francisco Unified was nationally recognized, the community is very proud of. The improved math program, and then the autonomy of building level leadership to meet the needs of local schools. So those were the five major areas. From the strengths on online survey, I can say that the 1,964 participants, for the most part, aligned with those findings from our interviews. So succinctly, San Francisco Unified School District has a great many strengths the district and community are very proud of and want to support further. With that, I'll pass the time to Martha, who will cover the district's challenges.
Actually, I'm going to cover the district's challenges and Martha's characteristics. You just.
Martha, your voice has gotten a little deeper.
Thanks, Glenn. So in terms of challenges, you know, the constituents that we talked to have a great deal of pride in the school district and want to see it be successful. But the vast majority of people that we talked to see the district as in a really difficult place right now and want to see a number of significant improvements in addressing certain challenges. And one of the overriding themes that I thought was really interesting in terms of where you're at as an organization was the fact, and this wasn't specifically stated by constituents, but it was somewhat different than what we often see in school districts. And that was the fact that a lot of the discussions that people were having around the challenges facing the organizations, facing the organization right now are around adult needs. And the things that they're feeling uncomfortable with or in need of improvement have a lot to do with adult relationships and the interactions that sometimes happen. There was a strong desire expressed quite often that particularly parents and staff want to see a much greater focus on the instructional needs of students. And I'm going to, this was mentioned a little bit later on in one of the specific areas. But they would like to see a focus on overall improvement in the school district and overall instructional needs of all students, rather than kind of a piecemeal approach to targeting specific groups in need of improvement. It's not that they don't believe that those things are necessary and that they want to see that happen, but they would like to see a comprehensive approach on what are the instructional expectations in San Francisco Unified for all students? And then how does the system work to support the unique needs, accomplishing those goals for each one of the subgroups that may have very specific challenges? Or in some cases, for the different schools that may have different kinds of challenges? So one of the main challenges that people see is a clearly defined set of student learning expectations for all students, and a clearly defined plan for achieving those results. Many of your constituents talked about Vision 2025 very positively, saying it laid out a great vision for the future. The frustration comes from the fact that they don't see how it is being implemented or what the deployment plan or operational plans are to achieve the goals that are laid out in Vision 2025. And they see the need for a much more clearly aligned set of curriculum, curricular expectations for all students, and then the instructional practices that are necessary. It's not that they want to give up a level of autonomy in terms of being adapting the needs for local schools, but they would like to see the district be really clear on what it needs to be tight about and around the science of teaching and learning, and what it is can be more flexible and looser around the art of teaching. And so that's a major effort. I know that there's some work that has begun in some of those areas, and the district has begun those efforts. I think both staff and parents would like to see those things pursued pretty aggressively. Related to that whole issue is, and I'm sure you've heard these comments before in other kinds of forums, but there's a belief that the central office right now is not structured to support that kind of work, that it's too siloed, that it's, many people believe there's too many people in the central office. Whether that's accurate or not, we don't know. But the belief that the central office needs to be reconfigured to support the work of the schools was pretty fundamental across groups. And principals in particular expressed some pretty serious frustration with the fact that they felt that the central office was not organized to support their work at the school level. And often, when they ask different people similar kinds of questions, they got different responses. Or even more frustrating, that different departments asked them for the same information, which just created duplication and redundancy in their work. And they'd like to see the central office find the way to organize that work in a way that, not that the information isn't important, but can it be collected and shared more thoroughly amongst departments rather than each department asking for information? Communication was also a major concern within the organization of both being fully informed about what's going on and having timely information, particularly internally from staff members feeling that way. But equally as important is communication of knowing what's going on. They also, and parents expressed this point of view to a pretty significant degree. They want to know why certain decisions are made the way that they are. So it's not just having the information, it's also understanding the decision-making behind it. A very important concern that I know the board and the community is very sensitive to, but each different racial group that we talked to within the school district expressed a level of frustration that their needs were not being met and that the school district was not as focused as it needed to be on the needs of a particular group of students. And what was interesting about this was that the feeling came across regardless of what the group was. And it was interesting to hear how divided the various groups, where this gets back to one of my comments earlier about the overall, the overall approach to instructional improvement being somewhat segmented and focused on particular target groups. There was a feeling expressed that to address the needs of one group was taking away from another group. And so that division amongst racial groups within the community was being played out kind of as a zero-sum game of if we're meeting the needs of a particular subgroup that has unique needs that need to be addressed, we're taking away from the needs of my particular group that I'm most invested in. So again, I think the school district and as the board looks at this issue is, not that those individual efforts aren't important, but how are they addressed in a comprehensive, thorough fashion for all subgroups and all students focused on those kinds of needs? And people shared very specific information about where they thought their subgroups were at. Overall, though, there was a feeling that the district is not making the academic improvement for students that it needs to be making. Another major area that came across internally was the level of staff morale. COVID certainly played into this in terms of people feeling exhausted and kind of overwhelmed by responsibilities that have arisen out of COVID for keeping students moving forward and trying to educate them the best as they can as things change and procedures need to adapt. But as important as COVID was also a feeling that the staff doesn't always feel that their opinion is valued in the decision-making process. And there were examples of being asked for information that they felt was being disregarded. So that morale issue, when people are feeling overwhelmed because of the job responsibilities, the way that communication occurs and the way that they're involved in the decision-making process usually either adds to that sense of feeling overwhelmed or can sometimes be a way to mitigate some of that. And I think the staff is expressing a concern that people are just really tired from the tremendous responsibilities that have been placed on support staff, teaching staff, administrative staff, building principals during this COVID crisis. Another issue was the budget. People did expect, that were in the know, expressed appreciation over the fact that the board has started to address. some of the short-term issues and has a plan in place for next year and that you've been working on that. They expressed an appreciation for the board understands this issue and knows this is on the horizon and is working proactively on it. But they'd like to see a long-term solution and much of that long-term solution revolved not so much under board-level decisions, but state-level decisions around funding levels. And again, well, not again, but, but also with the working relationship with the city, which was mentioned as being somewhat strained in many different kinds of ways. So the, the long-term financial health of the school district came across as a very, very critical concern for people. And then finally, the, the last issue that we referenced is a current level of frustration on some people's part about the work that the board is currently doing. I mentioned this earlier in terms of isolated efforts and improvement efforts. There's a frustration that passing resolutions and addressing specific needs is good at the policy level, but the frustration comes that communities of color are not seeing different levels of performance for their students. And they want to see an approach taken that really focuses on lifting all of those boats and all of the performance of subgroups within the school district simultaneously. So lots of thoughts, lots of feedback. You also received the individual comments that we, or the notes that we took from lots of our meetings. Those are references often to an individual, so they may not represent the whole group, but they will give the board a flavor on some of the specific examples that people were sharing on some of the challenges that they see the organization is facing and some of the things that they'd like to see accomplished in the future. And now Martha, talk about how those two sets of information, the strengths and the challenges translate into what people feel about most, what is most important in the desired characteristics.
Yeah, so we saw that there were four major areas that emerged from our stakeholders and we were able to interview, I think over 65 groups. And within those groups, so Hank will touch at the end of this over the survey results for desired characteristics, but these four areas emerged as the most important areas that they would like to see in their new superintendent. The first one, you heard a lot already said about this, but a systems thinker that is going to be, has that laser focus on instructional, on the instructional quality and on student outcomes. But there has to be, and again, I, I just want to reiterate what, what Hank has said. I think there's a tiredness, a frustration from the pandemic that has just worn on folks that the essence of what, the core of the work that needs to happen with our student learning and teach, teaching and learning maybe have just been fading a little bit. So this was really loud and clear that we need a renewed focus on student learning and that there needs to be within that, that whole organizational alignment that is going to lead to student excellence, that the superintendent would need to reevaluate, assess the current structures and practices and then realign those so that the focus becomes the core work of San Francisco Unified School District. Namely, they called out, you know, they need high-quality instruction, data-driven decision-making organizational practices and, and services that will lead to these strong student outcomes. So again, a lot on having a leader who is very systems-focused, but with the, with the focus on student learning. The second area that arose was, and again, as Glenn has said over and over again, there's a passion, just such a deep-seated passion for the work that San Francisco Unified has taken on around social justice. Over and over again, we, we heard that, that social justice equity, it's fundamental to the culture of your district. And, and I think for myself, I think as a person of color, just feel so, so blessed that you are, have that going on in your district. But within that is, and again, as I think Hank had said about Vision 2025, we heard a lot about that, but it's, it's kind of in theory right now, they're not seeing the strategic plan and those activities and goals that is going to lead to that full implementation of that plan. So they are asking that the next leader would need to drive those efforts forward from the philosophical kind of commitment to the plan to practices that are going to be real, that make that real difference for students in the areas of diversity, equity and inclusion. The third area was, and again, you see that in the challenge about communication. So you're going to need a highly effective communicator and somebody who is authentic in building relationships. And so somebody who's very, very talented in that, that can expand and rebuild the trust both among internal and external stakeholders. You just heard that, that was, to me, that was the one, number one resounding theme that really needs to be focused on is how do you do the two-way communication that reaches all levels of stakeholders within the organization? The last desired characteristic that we found through our data was a engaged manager of district operations. And again, this looks at the external focus of rebuilding those relationships with the city, which, you know, we've heard a lot about, but also the internal piece that really needs to happen to change the culture. Again, those organizational practices and the relationships. And, and you really heard very clearly, I think, from Hank through the challenges, why this will be extremely necessary for the success of, I think of the district as a whole, but certainly for the leader that's going to be placed in taking over. And so there is an evaluation that needs to happen around the current assumptions, the practices, the procedural pieces. Of course, the new leader is going to have to address the operational piece with the financial issues. And hopefully, again, as Hank said, we'll look for some, we've heard a lot about redundancies within programs and practices and the elimination of that will come, I think, as you do a reorganization that will help create that organizational culture that will bring forth the desired results that you really want and also be able to attract and keep a high-quality staff. So Hank, you want to finish it off?
Sure. Again, there's, Glenn touched on the areas from the survey that were strengths that aligned to some of the things that we heard. In the report are the five major items that respondents on the survey identified as the, the five top characteristics that they're looking for. And they almost completely matched the, the ideas that we heard during the meetings as well in terms of an effective plan and management of the long-term financial health of the school district, the ability to recruit, employ and retain effective personnel throughout the organization, foster a positive climate of mutual trust and respect internally within the staff and then transparent communication with all stakeholder groups. And if you look on page five in the leadership profile report, while those are the top five, when you combine all responses together, you can see the individual breakdown of the top four for each one of the subgroups that responded. So administrators, certified staff, classified staff, community members, fam, family members with a student in the school and how students responded. And the idea of long-term financial hea, health was everyone's top priority, every group's top priority. The administrators, certified staff, community and parents all felt that the employment of effective personnel was their second priority, the trusting climate was the third amongst internal staff. Students were the ones that focused most, students and staff were the ones that focused most on transparent communication. So there was pretty close alignment between what we heard from the people we met with in person via Zoom and the things that we heard on the survey. So that's, that's a 30,000-foot overview. We have, as I shared, we shared the pages of notes that we took during the various meetings that we held. We also just finished going through the survey comments and we can share those with you as well because there was an open-ended question if people wanted to share more information on the survey. So I can send that to the board members tomorrow and you can read those comments as well. The main task, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have tonight about the report, but the main task for Thursday evening is to have the board discuss what you learned from this information or how you see this information and how it translates to the desired characteristics that you think are really most essential in your next superintendent. And we took a first cut at describing those in more detail. Martha talked about the four main categories. We added a little bit more depth on page 10, but that's just a draft as a starting point for the discussion. On Thursday evening, we want the board to come to agreement on what page 10 should look like and what needs to be edited, deleted, added, refined, revised. Because we want to get this out to potential applicants as they're completing their applications for the board members review so that they're addressing the areas that you think are most important for your consideration as you review paper applications and then as you talk with candidates. So with that, we'll open it up to any board questions that you may have.
Great, thank you for that. Before we hear from the board with clarifying questions, I'd like to open it up to public comment.
Please raise your hand if you care to speak to the superintendent's search report that was just given. Can that be repeated in Spanish and Chinese, please? Thank you. Seeing about seven hands, President Lopez. Ms. Marshall, oh, I'm sorry, all speakers will have one minute. Ms. Marshall?
Thank you, committee. I'm Virginia Martha, recent retired educator, very active in the African-American community. And I am very concerned about something I heard in your report about not focusing on certain, certain groups. And when I heard that I draw wrote down immediately African-American groups, Pacific Island group. So we have to work with students who are not doing well. And unfortunately, many times those are, though, many times they are students of color. And I look at your committee, I don't see anyone on the committee that looks like me, that concerns me as well. And so your, your report concerns me greatly. I hope the board will look at your report and then think about what we do globally here. But I also want to know what organizations you work with, particularly to reach out to the lines of like school educators and how can we get a copy of your report? Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Michelle. Sorry, Michelle.
Yes, thank you, Judson. Michelle Jachmanegh is parent advisory council coordinator. I wanted to really appreciate Hank and his team for the work that they did in a very condensed period of time. They were very accommodating. They really make, worked to make sure that they could hear from the various family advisory groups and we very much appreciate that. I will admit to have having concerns similar to some of Ms. Marshall's in terms of the diversity of the organization. However, the report clearly reflects what advisories have heard, not only from our individual families and parent leaders, but across advisory groups and over time. And we feel that this report reflects that very well. And again, we appreciate the detail and the reflections that are not only presented here but avail in the report, which is on board docs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hello, Marisha.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. I'm Marisha Robinson, a mommy in the district of five beautiful babies. And I just wanted to say thank you to the district and for HYA for providing us this report and being accommodating to also hearing from employees and families. And I feel like the report reflected some of my own personal comments in there. I was actually happy to see them. I also want to tell the public, though, you guys should actually really read the report in depth and all of the appendixes and items that are attached to it. They will bring a much clearer explanation to the brief, high 30-foot level explanation that we had today. And you will see your voices reflected in it accurately as well, but also to gain a further understanding of families in the district who may be experiencing things just like you are, but you have no idea that they are. And again, thank you all for, for putting this all together and allowing families to give voice and input.
Thank you. Michelle Parker?
Yes, thank you. Hi, this is Michelle Parker here from the Second District PTA. We were also really grateful to be given the opportunity to bring some members to provide some input into this and felt that our actual meeting was really great. We felt heard, really great listening by Martha who met with us. And we saw some of our input reflected in this report. But I do want to just bring up one thing, and, and you know, I'm grateful for the interaction of the firm, is that for something this important, we want to make sure that it is really easy for families to participate. And the notice that we were given for the meeting was very, very short. We were assigned a time that was in the middle of the afternoon. It was a really hard time for families to come and participate in that. The forums that were created, we were, found out about them literally the afternoon before the first one and it was on a holiday weekend. And this, there are just a lot of frustrations in the timing that didn't feel like it accommodated families in the way that we really wanted to see. So again, our experience, actually giving input was high-quality, but we didn't feel like the setup and the scheduling really accommodated families who are working and who want to be able to provide time and need to arrange their schedules in order to do that. And there wasn't enough notice. And I recognize that everybody was under a lot of pressure, central office staff in classrooms and things like that. So I know it's a hard time, but this is important. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Brandy.
Hi, thank you so much for this presentation. As a parent, I appreciate it. I look forward to reading the report as Ms. Robinson alluded to. But like Ms. Marshall, I, I guess when I got this sort of overview of everything, yeah, just concerned to hear that this was something that was said again and again that, that this is kind of the sentiment that certain groups shouldn't be helped as much as others. And yeah, I, I think also just to also bring to this, I'm sure you're going to do this, having a lens that know that a lot of times the families that need the help the most do not always have access to or take these surveys. So yes, just want to, wanted to reiterate in a lot of the things Ms. Marshall was saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Greg.
Yes, good afternoon. Thank you. My name is Greg Bailey. I'm the program director for Parents of Public Schools. Thank you for the snapshot on the characteristics and the, the the points that you made around selecting a candidate for the superintendent. I was a bit surprised that they didn't mention selecting a candidate from San Francisco because it seems very important that we would select someone from the community who knows what the, the various communities are experiencing and that, that, just the fact that that person would, would be living in the city and maybe has experienced some of the same things as a current superintendent experienced growing up in San Francisco is very important. And I also feel that And I also feel that in terms of looking at the comments about the different groups and I think disparity, I think that's important that we have to acknowledge that and definitely support people of color. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hello, Hova.
Yeah, just a couple of things. One, I'm wondering if we can put the survey out again, just to have an opportunity for more to provide their input. The other is, as far as what you saw, this is based on from what I understand, what people in our district said. And that's important to highlight. And it does send a message that we have work to do. Whether it's COVID or other things, there is a divide and some sadness between various constituents and stakeholders in this, in SFUSD. So I'm hoping the focus will be in the next superintendent, not only learning loss, achieving better success, but also bringing us together. We need to see us as us and not as individuals. It's very important. And that's what I learned from what I heard tonight. Also, I encourage everybody to read the full report as well, because I did. And it really highlights some very valuable information. This is a learning opportunity to move forward and to grow, and I hope we do that. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Meredith.
Hi, my name is Meredith Osborne. I'm a student, I mean, a parent of three. One incoming, I'll have my third SFUSD kid. And I just wanted to say that I think the report clearly shows that we need a superintendent who will be laser focused on students, on student outcomes, and will ensure that the district is truly student centered. What parents have seen in the past two years is that the district has been dysfunctional, centered on adult needs and fears and on individual political grandstanding by the Board of Education. A focus on improving student outcomes and opportunities for all students must be the focus of the next superintendent. And I, I think the fact that there are so few parents actually commenting during the public comment here tonight shows how difficult it is for parents to participate in this process and in the, the board's deliberations in general. And so there needs to be an extra effort made to consider their viewpoints and their input. We hear too often from kind of the special interest groups that are made up of adults in the district and not from parents who, who are trying to support their students and their learning.
Thank you. Hello, Rhonda.
Good evening, Board Commissioners, Superintendent Matthews, Deputy Superintendent for Markdale. This is Rhonda Batiste, and I'm one of the parent leaders with APAC. And we just wanted to thank HWA for joining our APAC meeting and for coming out to listen to the shared experiences and hopes from our families as we move forward. And we ask and encourage the board and district leadership to really read the report and think deeply about what stakeholders are sharing and not just for the new superintendent, but also for the success of our children and educators. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment.
Great. So as mentioned at the beginning of today's meeting, our superintendent search is certainly one of our priorities, which is why we dedicated a portion of tonight's meeting to this topic and why we will continue our discussion on Thursday. I, I'm going to open it up to our student delegates and commissioners for any clarifying questions, understanding that we won't be voting on the characteristics tonight. And we, yes, I do want to acknowledge Commissioner Sanchez has his hand raised on Zoom.
Thank you, President Lopez. I want to thank HYA for your work with the district and with our community and communities. And thanks to our communities for responding to the work you're doing with us. I just have a clarifying question. Maybe it's in the report, but is there a breakdown ethnically or racially of the respondents to your questions?
Yes, there is. And I will get that to you tomorrow. Where, as I said, we were just finishing up the open ended questions, and that was one of the additional questions that we added. So we have that information and I'll share it with you, with the board members tomorrow and, and you can share it from there. Okay, so that, that information is out there. And I would, I would just like to add a clarification because I'm the one who made the comment about the subgroups. I was not saying that the school district should not focus on the needs of black students, African American families, Latinx families, Chinese, American families, Asian American families, Pacific Islanders. The, the issue that I was raising was based on the fact that we heard from African American families that they didn't feel that their student, that the needs of their students were being met. And they were very concerned that improvement had not been made in closing achievement gaps. We heard the same comments from Latinx families. We heard the same comments from Asian American families of students that were struggling. We heard the same comments from Pacific Islander families for students that were struggling. We heard some of the same comments from white families for students that were struggling. So it wasn't an issue that we don't need to focus and you shouldn't pay attention and disaggregate data by racial, ethnic subgroups, special education, English language learners. You should definitely do that and understand the needs of each one of those groups. The point that I was raising was that people, stakeholders and constituents were raising concerns about passing a resolution to address X. And then a different resolution to address Y. And a different approach to address Z. Because the feeling was that if you were passing a resolution for just one subgroup, you were doing that at the exclusion of other subgroups. And so I think that what I heard repeatedly from parents of all races is that they were concerned about whether their communities were receiving the need, the services that they needed and whether students were making the progress that they should be making. And so how does the district take a systematic look at all of those subgroups and create a comprehensive plan to be, to be providing the resources that may differ from subgroups to subgroup, but it be addressing all of those needs so that one subgroup wasn't feeling excluded because provisions made for a different subgroup. So it wasn't to diminish or to say you shouldn't recognize those needs or disaggregate that data at all.
Right. Thank you for that clarification.
Also, just to add to that, I would say it also doesn't diminish the work that each one of the different associations is doing and how they're advocating for their own group. That was loud and clear. That was passionate. And each group really felt very strongly about the achievement of their particular group. And they were proud of the work that they've done. And the advocacy that they put behind that. So that wasn't, that wasn't, as Hank said, that wasn't the intention of that particular section. And the challenges.
Thank you for that, too. I don't, this is not a clarifying question, but if, if President Lopez thinks it's okay to do maybe for HYA to give us the next steps for the public in this process.
Yes, I'm happy to do that after this discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Student Delegate Lamb?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you, HYA, for the presentation tonight. In regards to the actual input form, I think students got an email from SFUC Communications saying that we should share our input via the above avenues, meaning the forms by January 19th. And it was strongly encouraged. So I'm wondering if the form is still open between now and our meeting on Thursday for students or families or community members to still continue to give input. And whether or not the report will reflect that, any changes on Thursday. Hopefully, that was clear.
President Lopez, would you like me to respond to that?
Yeah, that was directed to you.
The survey is no longer open. It's been closed and the results have been run. But the sharing, the input and the questions that were sent to students, they were sending them to my email address. So if students want to send me additional input, I'd be happy to hear that. And I will tabulate that and gather that information and give the board an update prior to our discussion on Thursday if I receive additional information.
So I just want to know tomorrow, the board will be receiving information on data and then if there are any additional comments emailed to you, we'll also be getting that.
I will do that first thing as we start the discussion on Thursday because if something comes in, I can share it. But I have the all of the comments from the survey to send to the board the first thing tomorrow morning. We just finished going through all of that. And looking at that information. And the, and the reason that some of that was not done was we, because of the number of sessions that had to get rescheduled and moved around, we extended the survey from originally, and I think on January 14th to close on January 19th and held a community forum on January 20th. So we didn't close down all, we kept it open for another four or five days for additional input, which meant that we were still in the process of going through that.
Okay. Commissioner Collins?
Thank you. I appreciate the report and the thoroughness. So what I'm, I just want to restate what I'm hearing as some of the high level, I guess, priorities in, 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 or that just learnings that we got from the report. And I'm thinking that this is obviously something we want to hire for, but I don't think we need to, we can take that information and actually use it now. So I'm hearing that staff feel the need, they're expressing that we would be doing better at serving sites if we reconfigured central office in a way that better served sites. That's so is that, I guess my question is, is that perception coming from all staff or is that a perception coming from site staff versus central office staff when it comes to that? That feedback. And then additionally, I'm interested in this idea, this, the differentiation between potentially site based feedback or central feedback on the idea of the feedback that I heard, and check me if I'm wrong, but that we, as a district, people want us to be more clear about what's loose and what's tight. And for me, that means kind of having more clarity around implementation and fidelity of implementation across school sites. And I've just this idea that we want schools to have autonomy and at the same time that there's a lack of consistency of implementation or clarity around what is tight district wide. So if you could just share your thinking on that.
I'll start and then let Glenn and Martha join in. We did not differentiate between building level administrators and central office administrators in the groups that we went with or how they responded to the survey. So I did share that I did in the report as we wrote it, we talked about it from the point of view that we did hear from building level administrators about the central office being responsive to their needs. But I don't think the issue is quite as simple as restructuring the central office, which was made multiple times by multiple individuals and the need to look at that. I think it was a much longer term, deeper issue of being really clear about what district wide expectations were for all students. And then how did you organize and develop a deployment plan to have that happen in the school district for all subgroups and all buildings? Not that it had to be, was asking for one size fits all. They were asking for what should be tight in terms of learning expectations that all students should be achieving? And the best instructional practices that might be out there to help accomplish that and the choices and the multiple pathways that might be available to accomplish that. And then how does the building has some level of autonomy of implementing those expectations at the district level? So it's, it's not while people were referencing restructuring the central office, they were also referencing the instructional practices and expectations for all students in terms of, should all kids be learning and how to organize the district around that?
Yeah, exactly. They're talking about organization and processes. In having worked in a central office position in curriculum and instruction, I understand what happens there. And on the one hand, you have mandates coming down from the state that must be implemented. Yet, there are practices, because of research, there are innovative practices going on. Ways to teach that kids will learn better, deeper, more thoroughly. And that's an ongoing thing. So there has to be the opportunity to bring some of those things in so that teachers can try them and see how well they work for the student population of San Francisco Unified or a particular school. And then there needs to be the opportunity to share those practices which are successful for those kids most needy. Because there are great practices as research is showing, and these new techniques, materials are coming out regularly. We want to learn, just like the kids. We want to learn all the time and keep getting better. So that, that art part of teaching needs to be nurtured and encouraged.
I would just add to the reorganization portion of this, that part of that comes from the perception that central office is very siloed. That there is not alignment in the messaging that goes from from different departments within central office. Sometimes those have conflicting messages received at the site level. I would encourage the board to, again, to look at the, the actual comments that are in here and and look at the certificate. So it's, you know, you've got community, parent, certificated staff and administration. And most of that certificated staff is probably site level folks. They're probably the teaching staff. And, and so I think you, you know, you can see from the comments that are there, some of the areas that were pointed out at the, in the report. And I would just say, besides the systemic pieces that need to be fixed, it's also within that communication that happens between site and central office.
Thank you. And I guess in relation to that, I guess I'm, I'm hearing also some commonality in the sense that there's, there's an appreciation for us as a district in our work to support specific groups that have been historically oppressed. And at the same time, we're, what you're reporting is that there's a sense that, that work is maybe disconnected. Or that one, working on one group might take away from other, working to support other groups. And I heard you say something about, I guess my question is the sense, would it be correct to say that the community does not really see that strategic, kind of a comprehensive strategic plan that helps people to understand how those individual initiatives work together as a comprehensive strategic plan? And, and would that be a good assessment or, I guess, paraphrasing of the challenge that we would want to engage the new superintendent in fixing?
I, I think that's one of the critical issues that you want to be asking the superintendent, the superintendent candidates about in terms of how they might go about doing that. In terms of, no one disagreed with Vision 2025 as a philosophical approach. a philosophical approach in laying out the right vision. The place that the frustration crept into the conversation with staff and parents and community members was, how do we get there? And what are the steps necessary, as you reference, a strategic plan to accomplish that?
Thank you. And then I guess I just wanted to give some feedback in terms of the language. I don't, I, I prefer opportunity gap to achievement gap because it recognizes the fact that some groups don't perform as well because they are barred from opportunities as opposed to they don't have deficiencies in their ability to achieve. And so going forward, if that's the language that we could use, I would appreciate that. And then additionally, I just had a question. There were, I know we're rushed, we're moving quickly. And I wanted to know, we heard from several parent commenters during public comment that they appreciated the process of giving feedback, but that the outreach was maybe a little disconnected. And I wanted to know in the future, if we're doing future outreach with families, how we are planning to improve that process so that people feel like they have more knowledge about upcoming opportunities to participate?
I think, can I, Hank, if you don't mind, I'm going to respond. Two things played into this. One of it was the timing, the timing meaning the holiday. And so the holiday didn't lend itself to, I think, for the, you know, district to kind of get the messaging out about the community group forums that we were, we were having. And then on top of that, we were, we were planning, us, three of us, to do these community forums in person. I was really excited about that opportunity. That didn't happen because of COVID surge. So I think, you know, the timing of the vacation, you know, just our holiday break and then the COVID surge played into that. And it just, it was unfortunate, but I think those two variables played heavily into the ability to get those messaging out. And then we had shortage of staff, not us, but you did, you know, Unified School District had the shortage of staff trying to get everything done because people were ill also. So I think it was just, it was a timing piece. We extended our, our commitment to do a community engagement by another whole week and juggled our calendars all around to try to make it happen. And between the three of us, we were able to meet the appointments that were given to us, the community forum that was planned on the 19th. I facilitated that. It was, I just loved listening to the folks who participated on that. You know, we would have loved to have a lot more participants, but I do think it was those things that, those two variables was the timing of the holiday and not getting the message out and then the COVID surge.
So do you think just it's one of those things that going forward won't be as much of an issue? Or do we have additional strategies that we might employ? Does that mean, I totally recognize, you know, December and January have been really crazy, but I'm just wondering if there's things we plan to do in the future to just maybe look ahead, just in case.
Just, just to jump in, I, I do want to make sure that we're being guided in landing on the desired characteristics. And if we get into a broader discussion, we maybe will have a separate time to do that on Thursday. But I do want guidance from HYA to be able to do that for tonight.
We're, we're happy to respond to the questions that you may have and, you know, we can certainly talk about processes moving forward in the future.
Okay, great. I think Commissioner Bogus has a clarifying question.
Yeah, I had some clarifying questions in regards to the analysis of the site of the district summary and some around the leadership profile details that were highlighted. And I guess I'm just curious in regard to the state of the district summary, which is on page four, and it has like a graphic with the different constituents in different colors. And I guess if you could just share a little bit about how, how this compares to the other districts that you've worked with as far as kind of like the lowness of the numbers and kind of like the spread as far as just kind of getting a perspective on, on kind of how to like read and interpret these in comparison to other data sets that you might be familiar with that you could share?
You're referring to the survey report, right?
Right. The, the, the spread is pretty typical in terms of different, different stakeholder groups holding different perspectives on what's most, most important. So that's not so unusual to see the spread. I would say your results overall are somewhat lower than what the average for larger urban systems is. I don't think it's significantly lower. I'd have to go back and pull the reports for, you know, a number of districts to do that comparison. But as I glance at page four, usually you have things hovering more around the 40 to 60% range as opposed to the 20 to 50% range as to where you're at. So but I can, I can pull up some surveys that we've done in other places and see if that perception's accurate and report back to you.
I don't know if you need to pull anything, but I would love if you could just double check to see if that is accurate. Cause I'm just curious, but I don't need to see the numbers. Your assessment, I think, is good enough for me at this point. I'm also curious on that graphic, there isn't a blue circle for teaching and learning and for management. And I just was wondering why that was?
I will double check on that. I'm thinking it might be the blue and the green are on top of each other. Teaching and learning, and they might be on top of each other for management, but I will double check. Because everybody responded to all of those questions. So if you look at the item analysis for teaching and learning for the two groups you were talking about were classified in administrators? Why there wasn't the blue dot?
So on page six, you would see that.
On page six, if you look at teaching and learning, you can see how the administrators ranked those items. So they did respond to those questions. My guess is in the limited technology of printing those, that those two dots are on top of each other. But I will double check on that.
Okay, no, I really appreciate the clarification and seeing the, the raw numbers down there. The next question I had was around the leadership profile details and kind of the top four that came out of it. And I guess I was just wondering in regards, especially to the effective plan and manage the long-term fiscal health of the district. I guess just, just like more clarity, I guess, on like what that actually means in contrast to kind of like what we're currently doing and like how, how you take these results to kind of understand like the direction of the same or different that people are sending with, with that kind of profile detail of the next superintendent?
So when you look at, when you look at the, that list of characteristics, effectively manage, effectively plan and manage the long-term financial health of the district. Each respondent was presented with that list of 10 characteristics. I think it's 10, 12, 13 characteristics, and they were asked to identify their top five. So that language was not created based on how people responded. That language was presented to them and 50% of all respondents put that particular bullet, description of effectively planning and managing long-term financial health as one of their top four most important characteristics in the next superintendent.
No, I understand. And I think my question is more about how do we balance those kind of characteristics that were highlighted with the state of the district summary and analysis? And how we use those to assess the views of kind of how we're currently going about doing things? I guess, is there any, I guess, is there typically viewed a correlation between the two? Are they just separate from each other? Cause people are just identifying what they want in the next superintendent versus, you know, kind of analyzing what, where we have gaps or they feel like things are missing currently? Does that make sense?
It does make sense. And, and my experience has been that when people identify a significant challenge, it often translates to a characteristic that they're looking for. So the amount of discussion that has been occurring in San Francisco Unified about the current budget and the, and the structural deficit that exists and the financial health of the district moving forward was reflected when we ask about challenges and we talk to people. And I think it's reflected here because it's a concern of people moving forward that it comes out as a high priority in what they're hoping the new superintendent can bring as a skill set to address that issue. But it doesn't go into the details of why people are feeling that way. That we would have to, you know, engage focus groups or delve deeper into those kinds of issues. The, the, the two themes that we heard often were the structural deficit that needs to be addressed for the long-term health. And also was the district spending money on the right priorities? And there was a whole range of responses on how stakeholders felt about what were the right priorities or the wrong priorities? But there was, there was a question about where, was the district spending money in places?
Can I just add one more to that? Hank, the other thing that we heard was that there is, well, San Francisco and that those need to be looked at. So in both short-term and long-term, so that there might be resources that aren't being tapped into.
Okay, thank you for that. I see Commissioner Alexander and then we will be hearing about next steps.
Yeah, that was actually one of my questions because I have, well, first, let me say, I think this is great. I really, really appreciate this work. I think that HYA, you all have done a fantastic job of really listening deeply across stakeholder groups. So thank you. I think it's, and it's a really clear summary. I did have a couple of really small, maybe suggestions. Is that, I guess, so I just, so I understand the process. Are we trying to agree on that page of the desired characteristics? Is that the goal here? And we're voting on Thursday?
It's not the goal today. It's the goal for Thursday.
For Thursday. So I had just some very specific, small suggestions along the lines of Commissioner Collins earlier mentioned opportunity gap. I agree with that one. And then I had a couple other little ones. Should I send those to you, Hank? Or what's the best process? I assume those would be discussed on Thursday or?
They're going to be, the conversation on Thursday is to rewrite, to discuss that set of desired characteristics and to rewrite it until the board feels that it accurately reflects what you want it to say. So we drafted that based on what we heard from community members as a starting point for that conversation. We do not expect you to just adopt it the way that it is. We want you to, you know, to give you some additional time to reflect, reflect on the report that we shared with you. Cause given the fact that we were a little delayed, we extended the time of gathering the information. So we didn't get it to you quite as quickly as we had originally planned because we pushed that timeline. So you haven't had quite as much time to reflect on that. So we want to give you a couple more days to think about what you heard, what you read in the report, what you're going to read in the notes that we're at with, what you read in the comments that you'll receive from the survey. And then bring your ideas on Thursday on what you think needs. And if it's, if we can work through that process in 45 minutes to an hour and get that revised, we'll do that. If it's going to take longer than that, we'll figure out the process that we'll need to follow. Get it revised and bring it back to you for a second opportunity to look at it. But I don't want to, I do want to keep pressing you on the timeline because candidates need this document to be able to complete their applications. And the deadline for applications is February 18th. So we can't stretch it out for weeks to get this done unless we change the timeline for when candidates are going to apply.
Well, thank you for that response. I certainly would not advocate for stretching it out at all because I think it's, I think it's a really strong document, like I said. So my changes were really, really minor. So, but I did, I was just asking kind of how to propose them.
I will bring, and I, as President Lopez was saying, next steps. The next steps are for you to reflect on what you read in your initial reading, what you heard this evening from us, what you heard this evening from your community members who gave you feedback, what you're going to read in the additional comments that you'll receive tomorrow morning and to come prepared with the changes and edits, addition, deletions that you think would be an improvement on the document there so that it does what the board wants. Hopefully.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay. And then last thing is to Commissioner Sanchez's question at the beginning. Once we vote on the desired characteristics, can we give a sort of broad idea to the public of the timeline?
Yes. The timeline where we're at right now is we're trying to finish this out this month in terms of January completing engagement phase. And we recommend to you that you post the, we, there is a superintendent search webpage on the district's website, which is an update of the timeline of what's going on. So constituents can certainly look there. We would suggest you post the leadership profile, the comments on that. Once the desired characteristics get finalized on Thursday, keeping my fingers crossed, hopefully that those get posted there so that the constituents in the school district can see what landed on as the most important in the next superintendent. That information will be posted on our website with the link to the application process. Applications are due by February 18th. And then the following week, the board will be meeting to determine, to review those applications, the paper applications, and then to have a discussion on who they'd like to bring in in the interview process. And narrow that pool of candidates down from the initial interviews down to candidates that they'd like to bring back in later. So, and all of those steps and events are on the district website on the superintendent search. They're all laid out as a sequence of events.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, we will end this discussion and see you on Thursday.
Thank you for your time. And thanks again to all the community members and staff members, parents who devoted time to share their thoughts with us. We found the discussions informative and helpful. So.
Thank you all very much.
You have a good evening.
Muchisimas gracias.
Good evening. So I'm going to note an item on the agenda that I skipped, Section F, Proposals for Action. So we will go back to this agenda item and hear from, hear of the Arts and Creativity 2025 SFUSD's Creativity Arts Equity Plan.
So this evening, we will be hearing from our Director Sam Bass regarding the Arts and Creativity 2025 Equity Plan. Director Bass? Director Bass?
Good evening, Commissioners. We do have a slide deck prepared, but it's good to see all of you again. My name is Sam Bass, and I serve as the Director of the Arts Department. We are excited to be here today to continue moving forward with recommending board adoption of Arts and Creativity 2025 SFUSD's Arts Equity Plan that was brought to first reading and to the Curriculum Committee and to the Budget Committee, and now back to you. I do have with me my colleague Emily Aldama here, who is the Supervisor of Visual and Media Arts as well. Judson, would you like me to wait for the slide deck?
Yes, I'm pulling it up right now.
Okay, thank you. As you may recall, the Arts Equity Plan was paused by the Curriculum Committee in June of 2019 for our department to go back and incorporate the Arts Equity Resolution as well as solicit more feedback from a more diverse group of stakeholders. Hopefully, you've all had a chance to review the plan. For the public, it is posted on Board Docs in several different languages. And at this point, I should say, next slide, please.
Sorry, Sam, just a moment.
No worries. I can continue on as we're waiting for that slide. As you know, we are the educational program with the Division of Curriculum and Instruction, supporting the five arts disciplines of dance, media arts, music, theater, and visual art. We continue this year to focus on increasing the potential for arts and creativity for our most marginalized students and our focus on anti-racist arts instruction in all of our classrooms, pre K through 12. President Lopez, would you like me to keep going without the slides?
Give me two seconds.
While we're waiting for that, I actually need a motion and a second before you continue. So this is a good time to.
So moved.
Thank you.
You can continue.
Okay. So tonight, we are here to bring to second reading Arts and Creativity 2025 SFUSD's Arts Equity Plan and to recommend that it be approved by the board for adoption. This has been an extremely, there we go, thank you, Judson, we appreciate you. This has been an extremely extensive process that has involved many stakeholders of the San Francisco Arts ecosystem. And Judson, if you can move to the next slide, please. The plan was first presented to the Curriculum Committee of the Board in June of 2019. And as you know, we moved paused moving forward with the plan so that the new incoming arts leadership could incorporate Board Resolution 195-28A1, the resolution to adopt the Declaration of Rights of All Students to Equity and Access in Arts Learning, which was unanimously approved by the Board in spring of 2019. Since then, the Arts Department has worked with numerous groups, including teachers, students, families, and arts organizations to update the plan to its current form. The pandemic slowed down the process, which is why it is just coming back to you today. We are going to highlight the three major components of the plan and some key points from each of those. I would now like to pass it to Emily. Next slide, please.
Everyone, my name is Emily Aldama. I have a little co presenter here. His name is Valentino. He has been watching the board meetings so far. So the first kind of component here is equity and excellence. These are the kind of driving components of the plan. Obviously, we're constantly reflecting and refining and redefining what these words mean in the arts, especially as we've moved through different iterations of arts education in the last two years. Some of the areas of focus here in this slide are the types of arts courses and also the number, the number of offerings that we have at each school. We know that there's a big, that there have been big inconsistencies on what arts students have had access to in different sectors of the city. And so we're, we're collecting data on that and trying to make improvements and provide equitable access. We're also continually reflecting on our staffing as well as student work and improving the quality of curriculum and instruction to ensure that it's centered on our students' interests and their identities. We are identifying barriers and finding system solutions to ensure that students have, students who have been deprived of the arts in the past, including students of historically disadvantaged racial groups, English learners, and students in special education are beginning to have access to quality arts experiences sometimes for the first time. And we're also, we also have access to, as we all know, pretty incredible arts community here in San Francisco. So we're working to better leverage the myriad of resources here in the city. Next slide. So clarity and coherence, a big part of our work is creating, a big part of our work the last two years has just been creating virtual space and structures for our teachers to meet with each other and break out of the silos that we were talking about in the last presentation, connecting teachers across sites and also arts coordinators at each of the schools with with our arts organizations and museums. Currently, we continue to meet two times a month with our elementary teachers, and we've established rotations with our middle school and high school teachers. For example, we send out emails to all Jabalikes and start a conversation saying like, hey, everyone, here are the all the people who teach animation in the district. Let's getting a, let's get a learning, learning community going. And then these groups can use the tools to share the curriculum, how they're using their technology. And we can start mapping middle school. We can start mapping our middle school animation to our high school animation. And then, you know, another example is when we realize we have a gap in our, in our course deck. For example, for some reason, there's no ceramics two, we have ceramics one, we have ceramics three. We realize that we're missing that middle course. We can gather all the ceramics teachers, they're already in contact with each other. They're already friendly and excited to collaborate on writing a course for UC submission. And that's how you start getting the consistency across schools with curriculum that's been kind of disjointed and doing its own thing for years. Also, last year, we started to meet monthly with an organization of just great minds from the city called the SF Arts Community Collaborative. This group really galvanizes the arts community. We talked about best teaching practices, mapping our programs to, to, baby noises are hilarious, mapping our programs to work smarter on how we can fill in gaps in our arts offerings. And one of our favorite questions, which is how to successfully partner with the district. We've even had one of our high school interns lead a session on how she's experienced deeper learning at John O'Connell, and she's given recommendations to teachers and arts partners from her perspective. And then kind of our more, you know, bigger accomplishments last year. We have been doing resource assessments on an ongoing process over distance learning. Over the past year, we've mobilized 4,000 new instruments, about half a million dollars worth of new instruments, so that students would come back to music classrooms that were ready to go with instruments that were functioning, no one had to rent anything. We also distributed about two, 20,000 art kits, so students had access to the same arts materials. We also sent out iPads, document cameras, Chromebooks, et cetera, and then software like WeVideo and Soundtrap so that students have access to digital, you know, digital art making tours, tools during the pandemic. So in total, about $1 million in just centrally identified investments directly to the school classroom. So we're feeling, we're feeling good about that. So kind of reflecting on our resource distribution has been an ongoing thing for us. One fun fact that I want to share is that this year we have, because of the restrictions on wind instruments and air particles during COVID, we pivoted to distributing a ton of violins and ukuleles. So there will be like a little bubble of students who are specialized in violin and ukulele and digital sound making kind of as a result of our, our restrictions with COVID. So we've tried to be hopeful and kind of responsive when we've hit big obstacles in the past couple of years. Next slide. And kind of our third piece is data and accountability. As we move forward, we need to make sure that we're collecting the appropriate data. We're reviewing it with all of our stakeholders. That would mean, you know, asking the right people, our students, our family, our staff, and then reporting the findings in a public and transparent way. We're working on our website and all of our social media accounts to kind of publicize our findings. And we're focusing on continuously improving our programs with students at the forefront. One example I can give in this, in this section is we had a data report from Mr. Holland's Opus Foundation, which really clearly showed us that we had an underrepresentation of students of color in arts programs. We also were able to identify that the diversity of our arts department staff and teaching staff did not proportionally match the diversity of our students and families. So through these past six months, we've been more, you know, laser focused in recruiting and interviewing a broader community of candidates and of the six open positions we've had. In the last six months, you're able to hire five teachers of color, and we're hoping to continue moving in this direction with our staffing. So kind of in closing on this section, stated in our Arts Equity Plan that every student in San Francisco has a right to participate and succeed in high quality courses in a variety of culturally relevant arts disciplines as part of their basic education, regardless of their background, culture, language, socioeconomic status, or place of residence. So in order to do this, we need to collect and analyze data to kind of set our goals and realize our beliefs. And that's it. Pass to Sam, and that's all for Valentino as well.
Valentino quickly became one of the fifth members of our arts team. Judson, thank you for the that, the slide switch. As another reminder, one of the recommendations from the Curriculum Committee in June of 2019 was to solicit feedback from a more diverse group of stakeholders as well as more community input. Here you can see many of the organizations that reviewed the draft plan and provided feedback to us. We were able to partner with these organizations for this feedback through our community collaborative that Emily mentioned. In addition to the many arts organizations that provided the feedback, it's important to acknowledge and appreciate the work of the Original Arts Education Master Plan Refresh Task Force. For many of the components of the Arts Equity Plan came from that and from their work. We were also able to review and gather feedback from our Arts Equity Committee, comprised of 15 to 20 arts teachers from across the district, several school site arts coordinators, our high school interns that we were working with over the last two years, and multiple members of the PIF CAC. Who will, we will still continue to collect feedback on the plan by connecting with the Parent Advisory Council, our Student Advisory Councils, and as well as the Community Advisory Council for Special Education, which has already provided some helpful feedback. Next slide. So as I said earlier, we are thrilled to put this plan officially into place and into practice. This has been a long time coming, and a lot of hard work has been put into this plan to ensure that our students and families know how we will always work together for arts equity and arts education. Thank you for hearing us, and I will pass it back to President Lopez.
Thank you. This is always a joyful topic for me, and I am equally excited. My niece is a ukulele recipient, so we're, we're happy to see that in our family. Before we hear from Commissioners and student delegates, I'd like to open it up to public comment.
Thank you. Please raise your hand if you care to speak to the Arts Education Plan that is up for approval this evening. Can that be repeated in Spanish and Chinese, please?
Buenas noches, por favor levante sus manos y desañade un comentario público con relación a el programa de artes. Gracias.
Thank you. Michelle?
Thank you, Judson. This is Michelle, the coordinator for the Parent Advisory Council to the Board of Ed. And I just wanted to express my appreciation to Sam Bass and the team in the Arts Department for a really great report for the thorough levels of detail. We had a great presentation and conversation at a recent PAC meeting. And I think that this really highlights the direction that we want to go in with arts in the district. And having Valentino be part of the presentation is just more testament that we are indeed student centered. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Alita?
Hi, everyone. On behalf of the Community Advisory Committee for Special Education, we are super grateful for the opportunity to participate in the ongoing work here. We're grateful for, for the consideration of our feedback thus far and hope to be a continued thought partner. I would also like to mention the fact that, you know, as, as equity focused as Director Bass and his team are, some of the challenges that students with disabilities and students receiving special education face with regards to arts programming goes beyond the reach of, of Mr. Bass's team. We have master schedules in many of our middle schools and high schools that force students receiving special education services to choose between study skills and an elective. And so, so the work must continue with arts equity, but also above and beyond, and bring more of overall district programming and scheduling into part of the conversation as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Chris?
Did my microphone die? Can you hear me?
No, you're good.
Oh, good. Okay, I'm Chris Claus, a sped teacher from Washington High School, and I'm a very proud co teacher of a drama class at Washington High School. To my knowledge, it's the first time that a special education teacher has co taught an arts department class at my school, and it's so awesome. I have a theater background, and I'm loving doing it, and I love my students. And the thing that I love most is that students who have traditionally been tracked into special day classes most of the day have this awesome outlet of a general education class with their general education peers in a less restrictive environment to explore their personalities and to learn about the awesome world of theater. And I would love for there to be more flexibility in master schedules so that special education classes that are usually offered once a day don't conflict with that and that more co teaching opportunities could be offered and supported in this area. That would be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment.
Great. I will now open it up for discussion. Are there any comments from Commissioners or student delegates? Student Delegate Lam?
First off, I want to say thank you for the really in-depth presentation and special shout out to Valentino. But I noticed that on Board Docs, there's a sentence at the bottom of the background that says, "Staff recommends that the SFUSD Board of Education approve the adoption of the plan at this time. We are holding off on full implementation of the resolution until funding is stabilized." And so this is more of a clarifying question. What exactly are we waiting for to be stabilized? Like, is it P funds or is it like district budget funds in order to make sure that we fully implement this resolution and the plans outlined in this proposal?
Thank you. That is a great question. And also posted publicly on Board Docs is the Arts Resolution. And in the resolution, there are a couple of bullet points that, that call for a full-time arts teacher at every elementary site. And as we discussed in our Budget Committee on January 5th, that, and there's a fiscal and impact analysis that the Budget Office also ran on the resolution that is also posted that shows a $2.6 million cost to implement that particular part of the resolution. And so in it with our current financial climate, the recommendation from the Budget Committee was to continue to explore ways to add additional funds to fund that part of the resolution. But it is possible to move forward with adopting the plan while we continue to look to be creative with our funding.
If I could ask a follow up. In addition to the funding piece, are there also staff able to be at every school site? Or will finding people be an issue just given the circumstances?
That would be an issue, yes, because the, the resolution, as it is written, would call for the addition of 21 elementary FTEs for itinerant, well, they wouldn't be itinerant anymore, but arts teachers. So that's where the additional cost comes from.
Okay. Checking for other comments, questions from Commissioners before we vote. And I'm also noting Commissioner Sanchez, if you have, if you have any. And I'm also noting Commissioner Sanchez, if you have any.
I'm good. Great job, Sam and your team. Much love.
Thank you. Not to put any pressure on you, Commissioner Sanchez. Commissioner Collins?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you so much for this presentation. What I really appreciate is from between the time that we introduced this resolution to now, what I'm seeing is there's a lot of structures that you've built that don't have to do with, they have to do with how we do the work. And these, you know, across the district, opportunities for teachers to share knowledge, these consistent spaces or communities, it feels like, that you've built with the larger arts community to help facilitate partnership. I know when we wrote the resolution originally, what we were hearing from folks that were not district staff but wanted to partner with us, that there was a lot of kind of confusion around how to, you know, how to get involved in supporting our work. And it feels like, even just over this time, I've seen more of these kind of, there's just kind of a community that's growing and that there's these structures that exist that, you know, people can be regularly meeting and even communicating offline. Whereas before, it felt like things had to come through central office or people would go directly to sites, and there was a lot of confusion around that. So, I mean, just right there, I think that's a win, just as far as our capacity, you know, to work better and to share knowledge across the district. And what you were describing, teachers being able to share information and build out content, when we have so many different specific areas, like being a musician is different than being, you know, an art teacher, and even in very specialized ways, people can then connect with other folks that are like-minded and then share information. So I just wanted to commend you for your work and appreciate also the work that you've done to eradicate some of these systemic, I mean, it was inequities that we had in our system where, I mean, my kids did participate in a music class where there were broken instruments. And I did participate in music classes when kids were expected to rent instruments. And the fact that you've completely changed that culture and also had to be flexible with the COVID crisis, I think is just a real testament, and it's a real investment that we've made. And I just am truly grateful that the next generation of kids, they're not even going to know, you know, that there are barriers in some areas where they were just kind of accepted barriers when my kids were going through school. So I just want to say thank you as a mom, and I'm just very appreciative of that work. And I guess the only question that I have, and this is not something that you necessarily have to discuss today, but I'd be interested in learning it, is we're doing data collection. We're looking at involving more diverse groups of students that were before excluded. But one of the issues that you've even raised in the presentation or in the beginning of your report is this idea of having a more broad view of what the arts are. And I know I talked to parents who didn't participate in arts programs, but were doing Chinese brush painting, or they were, you know, there's a lot of cultural arts forms that had not previously been included in our repertoire. And I also think there's, you know, digital arts or more modern arts that tend to be more traditional in the past, and I know we're exploring more of that. But I just wanted to know, you know, how, maybe in a future presentation, some of the ways that you're encouraging participation through a wider range of offerings.
Thank you, Commissioner Collins. And yes, we can definitely have that discussion. And a big part of that shift is restructuring our arts team so that we could better support secondary, where a lot of those specific singleton classes of, you know, one class of animation or one class of digital media, and where we can create learning communities for those teachers and then, you know, to benefit our students in a more unified way.
Thank you. Okay, I too just want to appreciate, you know, as a former elementary school teacher and an arts coordinator, to be able to bring that perspective to the board and now see it being followed through to this time today. It's just, it's really exciting, and I'm happy that people are already benefiting from your work. So let's do a roll call vote on this item. Oh, last thing, I also wanted to note for the public, the Arts Equity Plan is translated in numerous languages as well, so more people get to see the work that's being brought forward. Roll call.
Student delegate Lamb?
Yes.
Student delegate Liang?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Vice President Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Maliga?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
And President Lopez?
Yes.
So nice.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
All right. So now we are on Section I of the agenda, tentative agreement, addendum number three to memorandum of understanding between San Francisco Unified School District and SFUSD Unions regarding health and safety standards. I need a motion and a second. So move.
Sorry.
Superintendent Matthews?
Presenting this tentative agreement will be our General Counsel, Danielle Halk.
Good evening, commissioners. Tonight, we're asking that you approve the third addendum to the tentative agreement, which is the third addendum to the memorandum of understanding between the district and our unions regarding health and safety standards. This tentative agreement covers the extension of COVID sick leave, the provision of high-quality masks for staff and students, and expanded COVID-19 testing.
Okay, let's check for public comment before we discuss.
Thank you. Please raise your hand if you care to speak to the third addendum to the agreement. Could that be repeated in Spanish and Chinese, please?
Buenas noches. Por favor levante su mano si desea añadir un comentario público con relación al adendum de salud. Gracias.
Thank you. Hello, Chris.
Hi, Judson. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks. I just wanted to point out that this is so incredibly important. The unions of SFUSD and SFUSD have really come together on this. These are the biggest three things that your employees have needed to feel safe and supported during this time. I had to miss a couple of days because I came down with symptoms. Thank goodness I was negative, but I was terrified that I had misjudged a symptom and accidentally spread COVID and did not want to risk it. And that's why I missed those two days. And having this available, like, I didn't have it available at that point in time, and now I'll be getting those days back, and I won't be worried about my sick leave for the future, and I won't be as stressed out, and I'll be able to just do a better job. I have masks that are really more effective than the ones I was using. My students have masks, they have tests. It just feels a lot safer, so please approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Tom.
Hi, I'm a teacher and a parent in the district. Yeah, I hope you pass this, because it's not just about teachers and school staff. It's about keeping students and families safe, which I think, right, we all want. I think the other thing, it's not on there, but just to keep in mind, I called last week about, you know, getting the self-swab kits to all members of school staff. And I realized that, like, you know, Dr. Matthews did what he could, and I do appreciate that. But I think it just sends a message that all school staff, all, from the cafeteria workers to the janitors, matter and work with kids, and this is about them. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes public comment.
Great. Any questions or comments from student delegates or commissioners? Commissioner Bogus?
I just had a question in regards to the length of the agreement, specifically in regards to the masking, the providing of masks and the COVID-19 testing. Just with the understanding that this agreement ends on the 31st of July, and is that a fair representation of what our commitment is to providing those to staff at this point? Or is there any other commitment that we have as a district to providing masks and testing for folks beyond that? And I guess just to say that, for me, like, just personally, I just feel like that's something that we should be providing kind of to a set point in the future that'll get us kind of through the urgent moments we're in now. And just kind of wondering why these have kind of a time limit to them, and if that's just for the agreement, and if we as a district have larger overarching policies about providing those things to staff as well as the rest of the folks at our school sites.
I think it's fair to say that this agreement, or the timeline in this agreement, represents our contractual commitment, but it does not represent our overarching commitment. So I think it's important to note that one thing we know is that this pandemic changes all the time, the conditions and the requirements change all the time. So obviously, we are going to have to come back together and talk about what are the protections we need, you know, as of June, which are probably going to look very different than they do right now. So the timeline is really just a recognition that the conditions are changing, and we are going to have to continue talking about this. And to the extent that we have any other commitment, it's really to comply with DPH's guidelines. So those two are changing all the time, but that's probably our best representation of our commitment.
So essentially, in addition to the MOU, we're just meeting to comply with the Department of Public Health's guidelines. And as they change, we're kind of shifting our guidance. So does that mean that we don't necessarily have kind of a larger, broader kind of approach or like stance separate from the Department of Health? Or is it kind of just anchored in, they're going to give us the best advisement at the best time available, and we want to be able to have the flexibility to use those decisions to make our decisions?
I think that's accurate. I mean, the only other thing I would say is that, you know, obviously, we absolutely have a commitment to make sure that our schools are safe places to learn and to teach. So whatever it takes to make that happen and to keep kids in school, that has been the direction from the board and from the superintendent. And I can't imagine that will change in June.
I appreciate that, Clay. I guess, just to say, I think the trouble that I have with it is it doesn't show that these things are priorities to us in the district in the way that I feel like they should. And I know that a lot has changed, but I feel like from relatively very early on, like, the need for N95 masks was known, the need for testing was known. I know there's issues around supply and availability. I just feel that our responsibility to our families and our staff kind of goes beyond what's available, and how do we really set a standard that we're trying to put everybody first and not just meet the level of agreeance to the standards that are kind of shifting and changing, separate from kind of like our moral responsibilities?
I mean, Commissioner Bogus's question goes sort of beyond this agreement, so there's probably somebody else to answer that.
Okay.
No, I guess. Well, yeah, I'm definitely interested if someone has an answer. And I also think figuring out what role we need to play as a board to fill these gaps, because I think for me, I'm just, I'm not happy with us kind of leaving these decisions to be made in the future or at the end of these agreements. And I really would like for us to set a stronger standard that is reflective of kind of our morals and kind of what we want to see happening at our school sites.
Like, if it's okay, I really appreciate that question, and I think it does relate to this agenda item in the sense that we heard from public comment that when staff feel safer, they feel less stress, and they're more able to teach and learn. And I know that I'm also hearing that from student emails that I got. And so the question that I think Commissioner Bogus is asking is whether or not we have specific language in an agreement, we want to, we're not, I'm not just interested in compliance. I think it's really great to get things in writing, but what I'm hearing you say, Commissioner Bogus, and correct me if I'm wrong, it shouldn't just be about compliance with a contract. We have a moral obligation to protect our students and show them that we care, right? And so I guess as a collective body, how are we setting standards for what that expectation is? And that should lie beyond just meeting the requirements of a contract. Is that a good paraphrasing of what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, I think for me, I just really want to figure out how I, as a board member, can say to the public, we're going to provide masks for people until this is over. We're going to provide tests to people until this is over, as long as we're fiscally able. And I feel like, I feel like, I feel like we, as a board, have said that, but it's not necessarily reflected in board policies or reflected in this agreement, and understanding that this agreement isn't the place for all of that. And the time limit is really in reflection of kind of how we like to handle our labor agreements and to have the flexibility to address their concerns. And I guess just really just flagging that is something I'd like to see us address as we enter into these agreements again in the summer and taking time as a board to figure out how we want to direct staff to better handle these situations so we can be prepared.
So I think, to be clear, as a board and as a policy, we did set that through the COVID recovery resolution that we passed. So it's stated, as far as specific language, that is definitely, I'm imagining something that would have to be negotiated and discussed with educators. But I don't see us not agreeing with what you're saying. I'm just trying to like, trying to find a solution and also recognize that I think we're all saying the same thing.
I think what the resolution calls for is that we have a plan. And that's a discussion about, in the resolution, it doesn't state specifically N95 masks, even though we've had discussions about that. And until we had this contract, we did not have that commitment. We did not have a commitment for weekly testing until we had a teacher contract. So in a sense, our educators have fought for higher safety standards than we as a body were willing to. We originally proposed those things, you and I did. But in order for us to pass a resolution that was acceptable to everyone and staff at the time, we had to eliminate some of those specific requirements or expectations that then labor fought for, and I think we agreed to in a contract. So I'm glad that we're here, but I guess I'd like to, you know, say, we need to approve this contract, and I'm glad that we're here, but when will we be coming back to actually clarify what I think Commissioner Bogus is saying, which is, what is our specific plan? What is our specific expectation for masks for students, for testing? You know, if it goes beyond the agreement or if it's the same. Outdoor learning is a question we've heard about. There's other aspects of our commitment to providing a safe environment for students and staff that we have not outlined as a plan. And the roadmap to recovery resolution does outline that staff will come back and show us a plan, and I have not seen those plans. So I'm glad that this contract, you know, language specifies some of that plan, but that's as a result of a labor negotiation, not as a result of staff actually presenting the board with a plan about what, you know, we would like to agree on as a collective in terms of our baseline expectations for the kind of safety standards that we'd like to provide to students. So it's not maybe this topic, but I guess the question is, when can we take this up again and finalize? And as a group, maybe we, you know, come to agreement on what our, you know, our shared expectations are for providing safety measures in our schools.
Okay, because of the details of that, it might be a separate committee topic or another agenda item in a future board meeting.
So I guess I'd request that it comes back to the full board and that we have a report on the, you know, we can agendize reports on different aspects of the recovery plan. Because I know, Commissioner, like I said, this is not the purview of this discussion, but people want to know about outdoor learning, that kind of thing.
Well, that's why I think this is in addition to what Commissioner Bogus is bringing up.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll have further discussion at a separate time. Let's do a roll call vote on this item.
I guess I'd also like to bring up one concern related to this item, if that's okay.
Is it about the negotiation and the?
Yes.
Okay.
It does pertain to, I guess, what I'm hearing from parents is that if this agreement states that students have access to weekly testing every agreement states that students have access to weekly testing every week, and the superintendent is saying that students have access to weekly testing every week, but I'm hearing from parents that they don't have access to weekly testing every week, or they don't know they do, and then I'm talking to students, and they're saying that they're asking for tests and that they're running out. So I guess in the resolution, it states that the superintendent will work in collaboration with community members to establish clear complaint systems, but I'm also just interested in how do we make sure that we're, what happens if we don't fulfill this, this contract? I know that teachers, they can file grievances, but you know, I guess what the question is, is how do we check? How do they know that parents aren't getting access to tests? Does it rely on teachers to file grievances in order for us to make sure that we are following through on our commitment?
If there aren't tests, they should, all they have to do is report that to their principal. We've, I have not heard this, so I'm just saying, all they have to do is report it to their principal, and it is our job to fulfill, these are, it's, it's our agreements with our labor partners, so it's not just the teacher contract, it's our agreement. And so it's our obligation to fulfill all aspects of what we agreed to.
So then I will ask for you to communicate to all students and parents what this agreement states, because I'm hearing repeat, and I'm not trying to, you know, I'm just telling you, repeatedly, I'm hearing from staff and students that they are not aware of the things that we are saying that we're doing. They are saying that they're not happening, or they're not aware that this is, this is our agreement.
Okay. I will support our superintendent in getting out the information from the MOU. Are there any other questions or comments from my colleagues, Student Delegate Lamb?
Yeah, I guess I wanted to hop on what Commissioner Collins and Commissioner Bogus are saying around making sure that we look at the Road to Recovery Resolution in future meetings, so I'm just seconding that. But also, I think that a lot of this intention and a lot of the language around making sure that we get masks to all students and setting our intentions as a board can happen as we start to negotiate for labor in the summer for the next year, and I think that'd be appropriate time to do that, because we can formalize it in the contracts. And also, I just wanted to voice my support for this contract, because it's super important that we get COVID sick leave days to our teachers, because at my school site, I know a lot of new teachers don't have a lot of sick days built up, and so when they get sick, they really, really rely on the COVID paid sick leave days. And so that is something that stands out to me in this, and I'm hoping and urging that we pass this contract tonight.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Let's do a roll call vote on the MOU.
Student Delegate Lamb?
Yes.
Student Delegate Liang?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Vice President Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Maliga?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
President Lopez?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Great. Section J, Introduction of Proposals and Assignment to Committee. Item one, Public and Board Comment on Proposals. Public comment on this item will be called after it is read into the record. Item two, Resolution Number 221-25A1, in support of partnership with Samoan Community Development Center. One, SFUSD will work with SCDC towards citing a Pacific Islander Resource Center in the southeast area of San Francisco. Two, the district will begin working with SCDC on a proposed joint use agreement for a district facility in the southeast area of San Francisco on mutually acceptable terms to both parties. I, Commissioner Maliga. Can we check if there are any public speakers to the resolution? And there's a total of five minutes for public comment.
Thank you. Please raise your hand if you care to speak to the resolution that's being introduced. Can that please be repeated in Spanish and Chinese? Thank you. Seeing none.
Okay, are there any comments on the resolution for first reading? Seeing none. I will be referring this item to the Buildings, Grounds and Services Committee. It will be brought back at a future meeting.
President Lopez, may I suggest that you also refer to budget?
Yes, I did not check with legal counsel, so we will also refer to budget. Section K, Board Members' Reports. Item one, Report from Standing Committees. We will hear from the Special Meeting Committee of the Whole on Tuesday, January 18th. Chair Lamb?
We had one informational item, which was the update on the health and safety, and that followed a pretty extensive discussion as well of where we are at even just a week prior, which was our regular scheduled board meeting. And so that's why tonight, we also just heard a brief update from Superintendent Matthews, given the push around including the labor agreement we passed tonight, which was the importance around testing and our mask and the continuum of the communication with families, students, and staff around health and safety outcomes.
Thank you for that. And next, we will hear from the Ad-Hoc Committee on Student Assignment on Thursday, January 20th. Chair Bogus.
Yeah, thank you so much. We had a very good meeting. Appreciation to everyone who came to participate. A lot of the big takeaways are that we are getting closer to having some zones kind of as reference points for us, for our modeling. I think one of the key things that was brought up, that I feel like has also come up in previous meetings, is the changing to a zone structure in a city as segregated as San Francisco means that it's very possible that the zones are going to be very segregated also. I mean, how we're going to battle that as a district to ensure that we have kind of the inclusive schools that we want, that kind of helped to spur this resolution, and so we'll be talking about those things and more as we continue the process, and there'll be future meetings coming in the next few months as we provide the public with more information and more detail. And there are a bunch of materials and information via board docs available for folks. Thank you.
Okay. Item two, under Section K, Report from Board Delegates to Membership Organizations. Seeing none.
Excuse me, President Lopez, may I ask a question about agenda, agendizing things for future meetings?
I will check in with you after about that. I don't know if we can do that.
I just wanted to make a public request, because I've made a request in writing to have sexual harassment and sexual assault be placed on a board agenda, and I'd like to make a request that either that be a committee of the whole or a regular board agenda item.
Okay.
And I made that request in November, and
Okay.
It's important. Thank you.
Thanks. Item three, All Other Reports by Board Members. I'm going to share the committee assignments and the chairs to, for those committees, beginning with Budget. Commissioner Alexander will chair and be joined by Commissioners Maliga and Lamb. Our Buildings and Grounds Committee will be chaired by Commissioner Maliga and joined by Commissioners Bogus and Sanchez. Our Curriculum Committee will be chaired by Commissioner Sanchez, joined by Commissioner Lopez and Alexander. Our Personnel Committee will be chaired by Commissioner Sanchez and joined by Commissioner Maliga and Lopez. Our Rules Committee will be chaired by Commissioner Bogus and joined by Commissioners Alexander and Lamb, and our Student Assignment Committee will be chaired by Commissioner Bogus and joined by myself and Vice President Lamb. And I'll also share for the chairs of these committees, if you can please update any meeting days or times to, so that the public is aware of any changes. You don't have to do that at this meeting. Item four, Calendar of Committee Meetings. Our Budget and Business Services will be meeting February 2nd at 4:00 PM. Our Buildings, Grounds and Services meeting, Committee Meeting will be January 31st at 5:00 PM, and our Rules, Policy and Legislation Committee will be meeting on February 7th.
President Lopez, sorry to interrupt. Can we change, we're going to try to change budget to 5:00 PM, because, to accommodate all the members.
Yes. Perfect. May I make a request of, to ensure that the QT PAC resolution is on the agenda for the budget meeting coming up? Thank you.
It's been confirmed.
Thank you.
Any other changes before I move on?
Sorry. I think we're going to change the Rules Committee to 5:00 PM as well for the 7th, so there will be probably an update to that as well.
Great, thank you. Section L, Other Informational Items. Item one, Side Letter Between SFUSD and UESF Regarding Evaluations for Spring 2022. Posted on the agenda is a side letter between SFUSD and UESF Regarding Evaluations for the Spring. And with no other items, we will adjourn our meeting and head into closed session.
Recession.
Before we do that, I need to check for public comment.
Please raise your hand if you care to speak to any of the items on the closed session agenda.
It's always a fine when we need the
Thank you. Seeing none.
Okay, thank you. So the board will go into closed session. Thus, I call a recess of the regular meeting. Okay, welcome back. We are on Section Q, Reconvened to Open Session. Item one, Vote on Student Expulsion Matters. I move approval of the expulsion agreement of one middle school student, Matter 2021-2022-11, from the district for the remainder of the spring semester 2022, suspended enforcement of the expulsion for spring 2022. Can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, Ms. Lenoff.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice President Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Maliga?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez? President Lopez?
Yes.
Six eyes.
I move approval of the stipulated expulsion agreement of one middle school student, Matter 2021-2022-12, from the district for the remainder of the spring semester 2022 with suspended enforcement. Can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, Ms. Lenoff.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Vice President Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Maliga?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez? President Lopez?
Yes.
Six eyes.
In the matter of NC versus SFUSD, OAH Case Number 2021-120853, the board by a vote of seven eyes gives the authority of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. On two matters of anticipated litigation, the board gave direction to the general counsel. On one matter of public employee discipline dismissal release, the board by a vote of seven eyes approved the settlement and release agreement. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.